Good afternoon. This is the Denver City Council meeting for November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Start in two minutes. I'm gonna step away. Ladies and gentlemen, watch your walk.
Denver City Council broadcast coverage begins in one minute. Hey Denver, it's time for the weekly general session of your Denver City Council. Tonight's coverage of Denver City Council starts now.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to join us. Um, on this afternoon, city council meeting. Today is Monday, the seventeenth of November. Tonight's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam or Jasmine, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Yes, of course. Thank you for having us. Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Guzman with CLC. I'm joining you virtually through Zoom and along with my colleague Jasmine, we will be interpreting today's meeting into Spanish. And so, my name is Jasmine. I'm the interpreter in Spanish on access interpretation. Buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman con la CLC. Y juntamente con mi colega Jasmine, estaremos interpretando la reunión de hoy al español. Si se une con nosotros virtualmente a través de Zoom, busquen en su pantalla un icono de logo que dice "interpretación", o prime a ser opción y de ahí seleccione a la opción de escuchar en inglés o en español. Si se une con nosotros presencialmente y está ahorita en la cámara, por favor, busque hacia el fondo a la derecha y encontrará un asistente que le podrá dar audífonos para escuchar en español. Muchas gracias and thank you very much.
And thank you very much, Sam. Welcome to the Denver City Council meeting of Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Council members, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the states of America, and to the liberty which extends, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Council members, please join Councilmember Parity as they lead us in the city council acknowledgement.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapahoe peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders, past, present, and future, and those who have storied this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities, and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call. Councilmembers Sawyer. Torres? Here. Albiethis?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
Gilmore?
You know what's good.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Lewis? Parity?
Here.
Ramara Campbell?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Madam President Sandoval?
Here.
Twelve members present. There are twelve members present. Council has a quorum. Approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of November tenth? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements. I'll start real quick and then people can count like our colleagues have longed to. Today, Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, council is scheduled to sit as the quasi judicial board of equalization to consider reduction or total cost assessments for local maintenance districts. No written protest assessment were filed with the manager or of the Department of Transportation Infrastructure by the deadline of October thirtieth, twenty twenty five, for the following maintenance districts and therefore council will not sit as the Board of Equalization on Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five for Broadway A pedestrian mall, Broadway B pedestrian mall, Consolidated Morrison Road pedestrian mall, Expanded Greertown pedestrian mall, Phase Two Broadway pedestrian mall, South Broadway Streetscape Arizona Avenue to Iowa Avenue, South Broadway Streetscape Iowa Avenue to Wesley Avenue, South Broadway Streetscape Wesley Avenue to Yale Avenue, South Downing Street pedestrian mall, St. Luke's pedestrian mall, and West Thirty Second Avenue pedestrian mall. Uh, Councilmember Alvidas, when she started, set with announcements.
Thank you, Council President. Um, as a council member for District Seven, I just wanted to respond to a conversation happening right now and that my priority is making sure that any major public-private partnership, including intergovernmental agreements for the proposed National Women's Soccer League Stadium at Santa Fe Yards delivers a long-term value, transparency, and real community benefits to Denver residents. The postponement of the IGA that we had last week is not a denial of the projects. It is a necessary pause to ensure we have complete information, realistic timelines, and a clear path to infrastructure commitments that support both the stadium and the surrounding neighborhoods. Our constituents deserve that level of respect. I am aware of the team's recent statement suggesting that without an immediate approval, Denver SAMAFC is considering locations outside the city. I want to be very clear, Denver wants this team here. I personally have been working for months to bring professional women's soccer to Denver and ensure the West Side, a historically underserved neighborhood, receives a financial investment it deserves. But Denver cannot be pressured into rushing through an agreement worth millions of dollars without finished CBA, complete infrastructure planning, and transparent financial terms. This project must strengthen the city, not burden it, and it must strengthen the people who make women's sports what they are, the players and the fans. Denver is one of the few places in the country where women's sports are met with unwavering support, where reproductive rights are protected, where LGBTQIA+ athletes and supporters are embraced, and where safety and belonging are not a political statement but part of our core values. That's why I remain committed to working in good faith with the ownership group, with the mayor's office, and our neighborhoods to bring the stadium and team to Denver in a way that is responsible, equitable, and sustainable. Women's support, women's sports deserves stability, community investment, and a home where players know they will be respected on and off the field, and I believe that home should be Denver. A city that stands by women, stands by equality, and stands by this team, and I will continue to do the work to make that a reality. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Parity?
Thank you so much, Council President. Um, I just wanted to share on behalf of Councilmembers Gonzalez Gutierrez, Cashman, Lewis, and myself, um, this Friday, the twenty-first, uh, towards the end of the day, we're gonna have a gathering, um, community hangout, I think is the term we chose, uh, for city employees, federal employees. It's been a rough time to be a government worker, and so, um, if you've just gone through the federal government shutdown, um, if you work, um, in any of those workforces that were did until recently, we would love to see you. Um, it'll be catered by Same Cafe, uh, and we'll be there between three thirty and six thirty PM at seven hundred and seventy-five Mariposa Street. There's a registration link that you can find, um, on any of our social media so that we have a headcount for food. Um, but we just have the sense that people could use a little bit of, um, sayings before the holiday, a little bit of community, um, a meal, bring your family if you want to, um, and it's just some time to spend with other people who may have been caring a lot for the last couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Five PM, we'll be holding our District Nine, uh, community, office hours and community drop-in at uh, the Whittier Cafe at Twenty Eighth and Walton, so come on down and share some, uh, some of the pork chops or whatever else that you love from Walton Street Cafe. Let's come and talk about any of the opportunities within, uh, District Nine, so I'm looking forward to you engaging with community on Friday, November twenty-first, uh, from one thirty to two forty-five at the historic Walton Street Cafe, Twenty Eighth and Walton, so come on down and join my team. Thank you, Madam President.
Hmm, thank you. Councilperson.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I have two. Uh, one is, uh, we have our senior luncheon coming up on Saturday, uh, December fifth. If you are a resident of. Did I say Saturday? Thank you. Sa- Friday, uh, December fifth, thank you. Um, and are a resident of District Four, reach out to our office. Um, I think there's just a few spots available. Um, it's a tradition that we do and lots of fun. Um, it's hosted over at the Welshshire, um, Event Center, um, and the Welshshire over, um, by the Welshshire Golf Course, which will be celebrating a hundred years, um, this next year. And then secondly, there's this really cool thing called, uh, Thanksgiving and the Turkey Trot. So, I just love that in southeast Denver, there are three different neighborhood groups, um, and we've got three different turkey trots. So if you are a resident of University Hills of Southmore or of Hampton Heights, um, you are more than welcome, reach out to your neighbor and participate in that turkey trot. If you don't live in those neighborhoods, you probably still could come and trot with them, or you could go to the Mile High United Way Turkey Trot, which is, um, at, um, Washington Park on, um, on Thanksgiving morning. I think their first one starts at nine and you can sign up online, but just all the fun, good things about, um, at least I think it's one of the fun things about Thanksgiving, uh, is to be able to do those, uh, little five Ks that we have, um, and get out before um, you sit down and have your turkey dinner. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Two quick next announcements. Um, one, the Forty Second Annual Hiawatha Davis Junior Luncheon is happening on Saturday, December thirteenth, from eleven AM to one PM, so if you have not gotten your tickets, please do. And we are slowly running out of tickets, which is a great thing. And the second is a thank you to those that were able to attend my office hours over the weekend, um, as well as my RNO leaders who were able to attend our planning meeting to kick off twenty twenty-six, um, in a joint town hall, and so wanted to thank them for their time on a Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a couple announcements. Um, I'd like to celebrate and wish Councilwoman Gonzalez a happy early birthday. Her birthday is November twenty-second. Happy early birthday. And for those of you who live in the North Side, um, if you've recently traveled along Twenty-Ninth Avenue between Zine and Sheridan, there are lots of speed bumps, major speed bumps, if you've used it, and my office has gotten lots of questions about that, so there currently is a survey to follow up on how is that a- avenue working. You can take it at B-I-T dot L-Y backslash Twenty-Ninth Avenue Survey, and we'll also be posting that on my social media. Seeing no other announcements, there are no presentations, there are no communications, there are two proclamations being read this afternoon. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, would you please read Proclamation nineteen ten?
Yes, Madam President. Uh, Proclamation number twenty-five nineteen-ten honoring the Second Judicial District of the Colorado Youth Detention Continuum, CYDC Team. Whereas, the Colorado Youth Detention Continuum, CYDC, was introduced through state legislation to establish a juvenile services fund that would provide resources to local jurisdictions on or after July first of nineteen ninety-three to fund an alternative to the incarceration services and whereas, the Second Judicial District of CYDC in the city and county of Denver, um, just so we all know, Second Judicial District, we're talking about Denver, offers services that include but are not limited to intervention, treatment, supervision, lodging, investment, bonding programs, and family services as alternatives to placement in state-funded detention and commitment facilities and whereas, by using evidence-based practices and building relationships with youth and their families, CYDC not only supervises pre-adjudicated youth, but ensures their success and improves community safety by providing supervision, structure, and basic needs such as rent, utilities, food, clothing, uh, access to mental health, and case management support. And whereas, in October of this year, the Second Judicial District CYDC Team was awarded the twenty-twenty-five CYDC Team of the Year Award at the CYDC Conference. And whereas, despite being understaffed since July of twenty twenty-four, the CYDC Team continues to excel in their role, assuming additional responsibilities as the case managers and management team also conduct tech screenings unlike other judicial districts. And whereas, the state CYDC Team voted for, the state's CYDC Team voted for one of Denver's team members, Ms. Deborah Gibbs, who's here. To be awarded the Bed Manager of the Year, to acknowledge their work in supporting over three hundred and fifty youth during the last year. Uh, and these are youths that are, um, in detention. And whereas, the team has succeeded at having a lower than six percent failure to appear rate and recidivism rate, surpassing the ten percent goal for the state. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, section one, the Denver City Council recognizes the essential role and hard work of the Second Judicial District of the Colorado Youth Detention Continuum Team. Section two, that the clerk recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to the Colorado Youth Detention Continuum Team.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Your motion to adopt?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I move, uh, to adopt Proclamation twenty-five nineteen-ten.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, it's very lovely to see, um, some of the folks that I've known for many, many, many years now. Um, some of you, I think I went to high school with, right? Um, but all of you serve such a critical role, um, in the juvenile justice system. And we don't talk about it a lot here in the city level because the youth that, that they're working with are, are youths that are in, um, district court, right? And so we don't necessarily see that come across our table, but they're, they're, they happen to be housed in the Office of Neighborhood Safety. And so we've talked a little bit about what CYDC is and, and what they do. Um, but hearing that they, they received this award, um, from the statewide, you know, the, the continuum, um, Youth Detention Continuum, uh, they received a statewide award, which is, I think, the first time that they've received this award for the Second Judicial District. And in Denver, you know, there's a lot of challenges that we have. Um, our young people are facing a lot. Um, not right now, but historically have. You know, we've seen the ups and downs in the juvenile justice system, times when we were over incarcerating our young people. Um, we still continue to face issues of disproportionate kids of color in our system, in our detention facilities. And what I'm most proud of with this team is that they're a diverse team. They always make sure that they have, um, language access, that they always make sure that they are innovative in making sure that there are in-house mentorship opportunities, uh, for our young people, that you're providing services and resources so that kids can be safely in the community, that they are safe in the community, and that, that you are also promoting safety in our community for our young people and their families. And you do all of this, um, not because you're getting a paycheck. Like, some of you have been with this program since the name changed. The Senate Bill ninety-four was the original legislation uh, in, back in nineteen ninety-three. That's how long these programs have been around across the state, and they're charged with making sure their kids that are come in from intake, um, that are arrested, and then they're doing a screening to determine if they should go to detention or stay in the community, um, and stay in their homes or go to a different level of care. Then they're tasked with helping supervising those young people if they are in the community. It's a, it's a lot of work, um, to do that because in the juvenile justice system, you are not only working with the youth, you are also working with their family. And there's a lot of components, um, that come with that, so I'm really proud of how hard our Denver team has worked to manage, um, our bed capacity at Gilliam Detention Youth Center. And also, you work really hard to keep our kids in the community instead of always going to detention and locking them up. And that's incredibly important, and I know it is extremely challenging, and I know there are times that you are tested um, in those moments, right, where you're tested and you're going, I don't know what else to do with this young person because they're not listening, and it's really, really challenging because teenagers, I have two of them right now, and I know how hard that is. Um, so I just want to thank you all for the incredible work that you do. Um, and, and I know you can't do it without the people who have been there for years, and I'm looking at some of you, um, who helped raise me in that field, in that work. Yeah, you. Yeah, Bishop. Um, but thank you, thank you again for all the work that you do, um, for kids that are, you know, have happened to find themselves in detention, for kids that are, um, you know, out in the community and trying to not, you know, recidivate and go back into those settings. Really appreciate everything and, um, you know, the leadership that you've had over the years, I think, have continued to push that forward, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call? Councilmembers Sawyer? Torres?
Aye.
Sawyer? Albiethis?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, will close voting and announce the results? Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. Proclamation nineteen-ten has been adopted. Councilmember, um, Gonzalez Gutierrez, we now have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Who would you like to call? Yes, um, I'd like to call up the current director of the CYDC program, Omar Martinez.
Uh, thank you. Um, was not prepared for this, but I'll give it a go. Um, our team has gone through a lot over the last years plus, with staff shortages, increasing caseloads, and detention numbers. But they have managed to stay resilient, tough, and motivated to serve these youth and families while trying to ensure community safety. We're a small team. We're only twelve strong, um, and despite the vacancies throughout the last year and three months, eight of us either, um, have two or three other working responsibilities or positions outside of our own. And although it has been extremely stressful and overwhelming, our team has been able to get through it, work together, because we are a family. We believe in each other. And overall, this award not only shows that, but they are very mu- very much well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, welcome to the meeting, and would you please read Proclamation eighteen fifty-four?
Yes. Proclamation twenty-five eighteen fifty-four, a proclamation formerly recognizing October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Whereas, we gather not merely to observe a month on a calendar, but to hold a sacred space of remembrance. A space where every life, no matter how brief, is forever etched in the hearts of the family and a community. We acknowledge the profound and quiet grief that echoes in empty rooms and silent nurseries. A sorrow often carried alone, but one we now, but one we now choose to carry together. And whereas, we declare that all lives are of infinite value and profound love. We honor the parents who love their children and hold them in their hearts for a lifetime. We recognize the silent promise of a future that will never be and the immense courage it takes to rise each day and carry that memory. And whereas, we recognize that this grief knows no bounds. It touches grandparents, siblings, friends, and entire communities. We honor all who have been impacted by this loss, acknowledging that their love and sorrow are a testament to the ripple effect of every life. And whereas, today we acknowledge the invisible scars and unshared stories of those who have experienced this loss. We vow to create a world where no one feels, where no one feels shame or isolation in, isolation in their sorrow, where every person is met with empathy, understanding, and the space to heal. And whereas, this proclamation is a vow to shatter the silence that has long surrounded this loss. It is a promise to all who grieve their, grieve that their story is seen, their pain is valid, and their love is external. We recognize that the most powerful act of love is to speak the name of a child who is no longer here and to ensure they are never forgotten. And whereas, let every October be a beacon of hope and a powerful call to action. Let us transform our grief into a force that advocates for better care, offers support to a neighbor in need, and creates a more compassionate world, one where no one must experience loss and solitude. We do this not only for the babies who are forever missed, for the parents who live on as living monuments to a love that defies all measure. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, section one, that the Denver City Council honors every October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Section two, that the clerk and recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to Ariana Barton and Denver Health.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Your motion to adopt?
I move that proclamation twenty-five eighteen fifty-four be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilwoman Lewis?
Thank you. Um, okay, my remarks brief. I have a deep appreciation for my office hours and one of them being that um, I had the opportunity to, to meet a brilliant young woman, um, who brought this to my attention. And so often, when, um, parents ex- experience a loss, that loss is often in solitude and often forgot about. And, and Councilwoman, um, Sandoval, you often speak about the importance of re- remembering our ancestors and the importance of saying their names so that their memories are never lost. Um, and unfortunately, as a mom, I've had this experience, and so when you came into um, my office and my office hours, it reminded me of my own grief as a mother. And so I really appreciate you honoring me, giving me the opportunity to do something so important, um, in your life, and so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Parity?
Yeah, I really, I didn't, um, I, I heard this for the first time tonight. I didn't know that Councilwoman Lewis was bringing this, and I, it's really beautiful and I really appreciate it. Um, like, I think, you know, a third of women who have actually become mothers or something like that, it's a really huge number. I lost my first pregnancy. Um, and one thing that I think about all the time right now is that we have sort of an invisible epidemic of women who are, um, experiencing threats to their future reproductive health um, because of conditions that arise during her first pregnancy and the loss of reproductive rights that we've had in the country. Um, and so it's, you know, creeping up all over the place, but just the fact that we're now living in a place where somebody might, um, experience complications the first time around, and then because of our loss of rights, wind up being unable to give birth in the future is really devastating. Um, and connected to that, both of my kids eventually were born through IVF, which took a long time and a lot of heartache. Um, and those kind of technologies, um, don't have much of a future in a country where we can't do the science that's necessary, um, to, to keep them advancing, so, um, I just wanted to point that out as well, that we're not exactly moving in the right direction. Um, and I'm really sorry to anyone who's been impacted by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Lewis, for bringing this forward. It strikes very close to home. Uh, my wife, after her mom died and her father had passed, my wife and her younger brother discovered and cleaning out some of her materials, they found a paper from a funeral home in their hometown for the burial of a three-day-old daughter that, uh, none of the three kids in the family knew had existed. And so, over about a two-year period, we made several trips back to Hammond, Indiana, where they grew up. Um, and the child was buried in an unmarked grave in the large cemetery there in the city. We finally were able to locate the pin in the ground. It had been covered over because this occurred in nineteen thirty-seven. We finally located a little pin after clearing away in a large area. And we found it, and we found her name. So she has a name, and her name is Catherine Alexic. And we bought a headstone and placed it there for her. So this is very, it would be my pleasure to, to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
I just have to say, because I was reminded from Councilman Flynn's words, that when Ariana came to speak with me, one of the things that she shared was that, um, when you have a miscarriage or you have a stillborn, that you often don't receive a death certificate, and so her work is exactly what you're talking about, is to be able to bring that kind of closure to families, and so thank you, um, Councilman Flynn, and thank you.
Councilman Alvidas?
Thank you. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I think it's important that people know how common this is. And I think probably many of. And I think probably many of us have experiences, I have experiences. And I had totally forgot, Councilwoman Flynn, until you mentioned it, that I had, this happened in my family. My sister was a twin, and Mary Elizabeth was my sister that passed away a few days after birth. So this is real grief. You're real people. And just thank you, Councilwoman Lewis, for your leadership in bringing this forward because, just like all of our ancestors, we shouldn't forget those that owe me for this for a small time. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, for bringing this forward. My husband and I have a dear cousin who lost her child, Alina Rose. And I got invited to a fundraiser last year, a nonprofit called Walk With Me. And it's specifically for mothers and families of infants of twenty-two weeks and prior. And I was there, not affiliated with my cousin Lindsay. And I started talking to the woman, and I talked to her about my cousin Lindsay's story and how devastating it was. And she said, I know Lindsay. She's come to our program. She's in our program. And Lindsay and her husband just helped another family. And my husband was so taken back. He made a big donation in honor of Alina Rose. We never said anything. And my cousin Lindsay sent us a snail mail thank you card because with that donation, it helped two other families that Lindsay had helped. And she emailed, called us, and said, I didn't know you made a donation. And I said, well, isn't that the point of making a donation is not to say that you made the donation, it's just to quietly support. So for those of you who may not know, it's a wonderful organization called Walk With Me. And what they say is that when you're going through grief, and if, I'm sure every single person in here has gone through some form of grief, that you don't always know what you need, but sometimes you just need someone to walk with you and walk beside you and hold you. And so it's a bigger metaphor of that that child will always be with them, that no matter where they go in life, that that love for that child will be there. So I didn't mean to tack that on, but it's just such a small, lean organization that it doesn't get as much recognition. And so just wanted to shout that out. So thank you so much. And in honor of Alina Rose, I will absolutely be supporting this this afternoon.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Councilmembers Sawyer.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Torres.
Aye.
Albedrez.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez.
Aye.
Heinz.
Aye.
Cashman. Lewis.
Aye.
Parity.
Aye.
Romero Campbell.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results?
Twelve ayes.
Twelve ayes. Proclamation nineteen eighty-four has been adopted. We now have time for the proclamation acceptance. Who would you like to call up? Councilwoman Lewis?
Yes, I would like to call up Ariana Barton and on behalf of Denver Health, Stephanie Snyder. No. Okay. Well, Ariana and whoever's much more important.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Ariana, and it's truly an honor to stand here. As the city of Denver recognizes Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, this moment means more than I can express. I stand here not only for myself, but for every parent who has known that kind of grief. I am a mother of three children I never got to bring home. I experienced losses that changed every part of my life, one of them being the life-threatening episodic pregnancy. Each time I left the hospital with no welcome home celebration, no birth certificate, no funeral, no space to grieve, my womb became the graveyard, and the world just kept moving like it was nothing, when everything in my life was forever changed. And I am not alone. In the United States, one in four pregnancies ends in loss. Every year, thousands of families silently carry this pain, often without support, without acknowledgement, and without a voice. The silence is exactly why awareness matters, because behind every statistic is someone's baby, someone's story, someone's heart that is still learning how to be again. Today, Denver is helping break in the silence. I want to give a heartfelt thank you to Councilwoman Shantel Lewis, to Denver Hudson, and every member of the Denver City Council for hearing us, and also Denver Health for taking such good care of me when I was going through my life-threatening episodic pregnancy. The silence is exactly why, oh, sorry, your willingness to create space for this conversation, to validate this grief, and to help bring awareness forward means more than you know. This proclamation is more than a document. It is a promise that our babies and our experiences will never be forgotten. My hope is that this moment brings comfort, visibility, and support to grieving families, and that it continues to open doors for better resources, better education, and better compassion throughout our community. To everyone here who has experienced a loss, your pain is real, your love is real, and your babies mattered. Today is for them. Today is for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Natasha Walker. I'm the Perinatal Loss Coordinator and NICU Manager at Denver Health Medical Center. I have the very awesome, but also devastating job of supporting the fifty mothers that we see at Denver Health on the Labor and Delivery Unit yearly, providing support. And we're able to provide photos and mementos for the families to take home. And then I provide post-bereavement counseling through thirteen months after their loss, plus grief support groups that are starting January twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. I've lost my voice. I'm an OB-GYN at Denver Health, and I just want to say thank you to all of you, and thank you for your bravery. It takes a lot to stand up here and bring this forward and to bring everyone's voices forward that's gone through this. I've taken care of countless patients, and this is going to make a difference to them.
My name's Stacy. I'm the Associate Nurse Manager of Labor and Delivery at Denver Health. Our nurses take great pride in taking care of these patients that we see on our floor and go through a lot of care in packing these mementos and things for patients to take home so that they have some sort of remembrance that is often overlooked and not talked about. And on October fifteenth is the National Wave of Light, so that's great that there's one day, but the fact that we're getting a month is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the bills for introduction.
From the Community Planning and Housing Committee, twenty-five dash sixteen thirty-four, a bill for an ordinance amended with Denver Revised Municipal Code, Section ten dash sixteen concerning building and fire codes. From the Finance and Business Committee, twenty-five dash seventeen oh nine, a bill for an ordinance establishing a new fund in the General Government Special Revenue Fund Series for Payment Processing. Twenty-five dash seventeen ten, a bill for an ordinance authorizing capital equipment purchases from the Denver Public Library Special Revenue Fund, one five eight three zero fund. Twenty-five dash seventeen eleven, a bill for an ordinance making rescissions of unused capital improvement funds from completed and deferred capital improvement programs. Twenty-five dash seventeen twelve, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number five nine one, series of twenty twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number seven zero six, series of twenty twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number eleven forty-five, series of twenty twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number eleven ninety-two, series of twenty twenty-one, as amended by ordinance number three seventy-four, series of twenty twenty-two, as amended by ordinance number nine sixty-nine, series of twenty twenty-two, as amended by ordinance number fourteen fifty, series of twenty twenty-two, as amended by ordinance number zero five four eight, series of twenty twenty-three, as amended by ordinance number thirteen twenty-six, series of twenty twenty-three, as amended by ordinance number sixteen eighty-three, series of twenty twenty-three, as amended by ordinance number zero eight zero two, series of twenty twenty-four, as amended by ordinance number fifteen sixty-one, series of twenty twenty-four, to allocate interest earnings in the revenue loss and recovery categories to support programs, including temporary rental and utility assistance, TRUA, elections, immigrant legal services, wage theft enforcement, and the Denver Food Systems Summit. Twenty-five dash seventeen thirteen, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance seven sixty-two, series of twenty twenty, concerning the Central Branch Library Renovation Fund. Twenty-five dash seventeen fourteen, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance nine fifteen, series of twenty twenty-five, concerning the Denver Downtown Development Authority Fund, eleven eight nine three. Twenty-five dash seventeen fifteen, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance number twelve eighty-six, series of twenty twenty-one, concerning the Dental Self-Insurance Internal Service Fund. Twenty-five dash seventeen sixteen, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance fifteen forty-two, series of twenty twenty-four, concerning the Sidewalks Operating Fund and the Sidewalks Capital Equipment Improvement Fund Programs. Twenty-five dash seventeen seventeen, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance one eighty-four, series nineteen ninety-two, as amended by ordinance twelve fifty-five, series of twenty seventeen, concerning planned fleet fund purpose. Twenty-five dash eighteen thirteen, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting public business for the year twenty twenty-six and for the purposes required by the Charter and by other law. From the Health and Safety Committee, twenty-five dash sixteen thirty-three, a bill for an ordinance approving a fifth ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and University of Colorado Hospital Authority to provide care, treatment, and supportive services to individuals living with HIV and AIDS in the Denver Transition Legrand Area, PGA. Twenty-five dash sixteen thirty-seven, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six amendment to the second amended and restated operating agreement between the City and County of Denver and Denver Health and Hospital Authority, providing for the amounts to be paid for services by the City and County of Denver and by the Denver Health and Hospital Authority for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. From the South Platte River Committee, twenty-five dash fifteen forty-one, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification of seven zero nine South Delaware Street in Baker. Twenty-five dash sixteen oh seven, a bill for an ordinance establishing a new fund in the Community Development Fund Series for the Dedicated Linkage Fee Fund, one six eight one seven. Twenty-five dash sixteen twelve, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed second amendment to KSC Development Agreement between the City and County of Denver and Cronky Arena Company LLC, Cronky Parking LLC, Fifth Street Limited LLC, Cronky Sports and Entertainment Metropolitan District Number One, Cronky Sports and Entertainment Metropolitan District Number Two, Cronky Sports and Entertainment Metropolitan District Number Three, Cronky Sports and Entertainment Metropolitan District Number Four, Cronky Sports and Entertainment Metropolitan District Number Five, obligating the developer districts in their assigns to certain requirements for development of acreage bounded by the consolidated main line to the north and west, Spear Boulevard to the east, and Araria Parkway to the south, in Council District Three. And twenty-five dash sixteen twenty, a bill for an ordinance approving a proposed sixth ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, the Weir Gold to Reach W One Project, will revise some construction requirements and fund management.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmembers, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilmember Parity, will you make the motions for us this evening?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you. Now I will do a recap. Under resolutions, Councilmember Parity has called out Resolution fifteen eighty for amendment and Council Resolution fifteen twenty-nine for questions and comments. Councilmember Lewis has called out Council Resolution fifteen eighty for comments, Council Resolutions sixteen twenty-six, sixteen twenty-seven in a block, and Council Resolution sixteen forty for questions. And Councilmember Albedrez has called out Resolutions fifteen sixty-nine, fifteen seventy, and fifteen seventy-one in a block for questions. Under bills for introduction, Councilmember Flynn has called out Council Bill sixteen thirty-four for a vote. Councilmember Lewis has called out Bill sixteen oh seven for questions and eighteen thirteen for comments. And Councilmember Albedrez has called out Council Bill seventeen fourteen for questions and a vote. Under bills for final consideration, Councilmember Lewis has called out Council Bills fifteen ninety and fifteen ninety-four for a vote. Under pending, no items have been called out. Madam Secretary, please put the first item on our screens. Council Resolution fifteen twenty-nine, a resolution approving a proposed ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and Roth Shepherd Architects LLP to add professional design services for Police District Six, replacement location at fifteen sixty-six North Washington Street. Councilmember Parity, please go ahead with your questions and comments.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I primarily or probably only have comments, which is just that this has to do with the Denver Police District Six parcel, which is located, as it says, on Colfax and Washington, really close to downtown. It's a part of the city that's zoned for as much as twelve stories of housing. It's a very large parcel. And before the current mayoral administration, to my understanding, because of course I wasn't on council at the time, there was quite a bit of conversation about trying to intentionally limit the footprint of the police station so that half or even three-quarters of the site could be used as housing. Because as far as city-owned parcels go, it's a pretty rare opportunity in that regard, given that it's right on the new BRT and zoned in the way that it is. You know, and the other reason I kind of want to highlight this is just because it goes to show how many decisions about things like use of city parcels sometimes happen without public input, as this process mostly has. I think that my colleague, Councilwoman Heinz, has certainly spoken to the public a lot about it. But it's been a little bit of a, the process has mostly unfolded behind closed doors. When the RFP went out, it did not ask for those who responded to it to try to limit the footprint of the building in any way. So that wasn't one of the considerations taken into account from the jump. And it's just sort of proceeded forward in that way. And I know that there's community members who really hoped it would be a different outcome and wanted to weigh in. So I'm just calling it out tonight to kind of, you know, note that in public and ask that they continue to have a chance to sort of voice their feedback to these designs as this goes forward. But that's really it. So, yeah, I'm not going to, I thought about postponing under Rule three point six, but I don't think there's a reason to do that. I'm not a no vote because we need a design contract, but I wish that we had a different way of thinking about these decisions when it's a city-owned parcel that's involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution sixteen twenty-six, a resolution approving a proposed purchase agreement between the City and County of Denver and Braun Northwest Inc. for the one-time purchase of a twenty twenty-six North Star two seven seven dash five command vehicle for Jefferson County Regional Bombsquads. Council Resolution sixteen twenty-seven, a resolution approving a proposed purchase agreement between the City and County of Denver, Braun Northwest Inc., for the one-time purchase of a twenty twenty-six North Star two seven seven dash five command vehicle for Douglas County Regional Bomb Squads. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your comments on Council Resolutions sixteen twenty-six and sixteen twenty-seven.
Thank you. I called this out out of pure curiosity. I was just curious why we were paying for bomb squad vehicles in Douglas County and Jefferson County, and my question was answered. But I thought the answer was really interesting, so I thought I'd read it for the public in case anyone else was interested in why we might be doing that. So since two thousand and three, the City and County of Denver has been the fiscal administrator for the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. This program is part of a suite of homeland security grants designed by FEMA. The Denver region, as defined by the grant, includes our Tin County Metropolitan Statistical Area, or MSA, which is inclusive of Douglas County and Jefferson Counties. As a result, these funds are used for projects within Denver and within our surrounding cities and counties. The thought behind this setup is metropolitan areas will be more prepared for emergencies and all accidents in the region and have the proper equipment, training, et cetera. And so all UASI grants received by cities around the country are set up this way. The funding comes to the core city in the MSA and is distributed from there. The funds support projects, equipments, and training for first responders, regional planning and exercises, as well as emergency preparedness and response initiatives for the designated urban areas. The purchase, or the project, excuse me, the purchase of these two bomb vehicles was selected through a competitive process and was funded on the FY24 UASI Grant Award, which was authorized by the City Council via Council Bill twenty-five zero one two six in February of this year. So if you were interested. I was.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution sixteen forty, a resolution approving a proposed third ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and Parsons Transportation Group to provide subject support and design services during construction for the Colfax Transit Implementation Bus Transit, Bus Rapid Transit Project. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your questions on Resolution sixteen forty.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to start with, and I'm not necessarily opposed to this item, but I hear from my constituents in East Colfax specifically, that the overflow in the surrounding blocks from the BRT construction is already a huge problem. And so I have two questions. First, what do we have in place currently to address these concerns or mitigate the problem? And then the second question is, what does this contract do or intend to do in the future for this issue?
Good afternoon, Councilmember.
Uh, good afternoon, Councilmember Lewis. Uh, my name is Jonathan Stewart. I'm with Dottie. I'm the project director for Colfax BRT. Uh, could you repeat the question again, one more please?
Yeah, and I can separate him if it's helpful.
Okay.
Um, so the first, first one is, so just for the context, it's, I've been hearing about this overflow from, um, the East Colfax area and the, the neighbors in, in that, um, in that geographical area. And so the first question is, what do we have in place currently to address these concerns or to mitigate the problem? And then the second question is, what does this contract do or intend to do in the future for this issue regarding overflow?
Sure. So, so what you're, what I'm, what I heard you say is that you're hearing problems with traffic overflowing onto, into the neighborhood
Correct.
in the East Colfax area.
Yeah.
Um, so that is something that we do work very hard to try and mitigate, that kind of impact. And, excuse me, I would say that one of, several of the things that we're doing, uh, involve just trying to make it, uh, traffic flow a little more normally a, along Colfax itself. Uh, so we spend a lot of time working on that, making sure that the traffic lights are all working, making sure that the, even though there is construction on, along the corridor, that it is able to flow a, as much as reasonably possible through that area. So I think that we do a lot of effort with that. Uh, and if there are any specific concerns that come up, then we try and isolate those and try and figure out solutions to those. And so we have identified a number of those that have kind of occurred, uh, for a short term, short-term period, and we work to mitigate those. Uh, I think one example would be something like, uh, there was a, a, a lane closure along York Street, uh, that happened, and, and that was very impactful to the neighborhood. Uh, we, I, I asked the contractor to work overtime to try and, uh, get that work done as quickly as possible, and that has since passed, and, and that is, that road is now fully open again. And that's kind of the things that we encounter when we're doing construction for this project, is we'll see something that we have to go in and fix, we have to do some kind of temporary closure, but it only lasts for a couple of weeks, and then we're able to open it back up again. And so I think that that's kind of, if, if we see impacts where people are really going into the neighborhood, it would be some sort of isolated impact like that.
I can't remember my comfortable position. Can you talk about specific mitigations for the East Colfax as it pertains to the BRT that you all have put in place?
Specific mitigations along East Colfax?
Yeah.
In, in your district or the corridor?
I would guess that there are probably several councilmembers who would be interested, and I would guess it's not isolated to East Colfax.
Yeah, sure. Um, so I, I think that we have a lot of wayfinding, uh, and then I, I mean, I think there's only so much that we can do. Uh, really what we're trying to do is kind of mitigate them from going into neighborhoods. And so we do that with, with signage, and also we have, we, we try and route the traffic differently so that, so that that's not happening, because that's absolutely what we don't want to have happen. But I would say that, uh, one of the unfortunate circumstances is that traffic has to go somewhere, so they typically go to, uh, other parallel streets where they can continue to go east-west. And there's a limited amount that we can do because Colfax is under construction right now.
Okay. Um, the second question is, can you tell me what this contract is? Um, what this contract does or what is it attempting to do, uh, for the future about this issue? Because that's what, it seems like it's.
Yeah, absolutely. I could, I can definitely talk about that. So this contract is with the designer for the project, and what we're asking them to do, i- it's really kind of a lot of little things that we're asking them to do that are additional services that we had not scoped them out to do in the first contract.
Okay.
So we're adding a little bit of extra capacity. It does not change our project budget. We're adding a little bit of extra capacity to do a couple of different things. One of those is we did receive a grant from the state for crime prevention through environmental design, uh, and this is to, uh, do a lot of things that kind of help mitigate crime that happens along the corridor. So, uh, we're installing some lighting along the corridor in, in the farther east segment. Uh, and so we need construction plans to put that lighting and figure out exactly where to place it. So we're having Parsons put together the design for that. Another element is that, uh, we're converting some of our, uh, areas where we have trees, uh, we're converting it to help mitigate water quality from storm runoff on the street. Green infrastructure is what we call it. And so we're incorporating some of those elements of green infrastructure into some of those areas where we're adding trees along the street. Uh, that example of that is when we're putting in trees along sidewalk, um, sometimes there's a utility underground that we didn't know was there previously. So we have to maybe move that tree over five feet or find a different place farther down the block altogether for it, and we have to make changes to our construction plans. And, uh, so that's another aspect that we're asking Parsons to do, is to continue to make those adjustments. And, uh, those are the three main elements. I think the fourth element is we're also adding a PA system to the bus stations, the center-running bus stations, we're adding a PA system. This is for enhanced security along the corridor. Uh, this is to be used in cases where there is a, uh, situation happening with people's personal safety or something like that. And this allows RTD to be able to communicate with people on the station, because there will be video cameras on the station, that's already in the contract, but having the PA speaker there, so what the people that are in the station looking at the video cameras, they see something where there might be some kind of danger happening, this gives them the ability to, to speak to them as well in real time.
Okay, now you've piqued my interest.
Okay.
The, the RTD aspect with the PA system, is that folks who are like in their central command?
Correct. Yes, it goes to their central command.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Councilwomen. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Resolution fifteen sixty-nine, a resolution approving a proposed fourth ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver, A, O, R, Inc., to continue providing consulting services for marketing and branding initiatives for the city departments. Council Resolution fifteen seventy, a resolution approving a proposed third agreement between the City and County of Denver and Roseland Design, LLC, to provide continuing consulting services for marketing and branding initiatives for city departments. And Council Resolution fifteen seventy-one, a resolution approving a proposed third ammendatory agreement between the City and County of Denver and Ground Floor Media, Inc., to continue providing consulting services for marketing and branding initiatives for the city departments. Councilmember Alvidres, please go ahead with your questions on Council Resolutions fifteen sixty-nine, fifteen seventy, and fifteen seventy-one.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just had a question around what kind of marketing, um, are we talking about here? I was a little confused about what marketing this was for.
Hi, Jenny Shavoni, Chief Digital Officer in Technology Services. So these are contracts that are available to every city department, and the type of marketing that we're talking about are usually big campaigns. So think about like the Emerald Ashbor campaign, um, the Parks Recreation has been doing for a number of years. Um, I, I could rattle off a whole bunch, but they're generally for multifaceted marketing campaigns that need a strategy, um, a layered advertising approach, needs design and, um, copy created for it as well. So kind of the big, um, marketing efforts at the city isn't necessarily staffed for in-house. This is a, um, extra, you know, sort of professional services opportunity for agencies to use.
Okay. And so this isn't changing the allocation or anything, it's just extending the availability?
Okay. It's extending for one year, um, so that, so the contracts are in Technology Services right now as a holdover from when we had the citywide marketing office in our agency. So we're working with General Services to transition contracts, these contracts to them next year and go out to RFPs, since these are now seven years old since our last RFP.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yeah, that all makes sense. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill sixteen thirty-nine, a bill for an ordinance amending the Denver Revised Municipal Code, Section ten through sixteen, concerning the building and prior codes. Councilmember Parry, will you please put Council Bill sixteen thirty-four on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five sixteen thirty-four be ordered published.
It has been moved in second. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Flynn?
I don't want to relitigate the issue that went through committee in several briefings, but I simply wanted to vote no on this because I don't support the changes that are being made for single-stair, uh, residential structures, small residential. And, um, I guess that's it, just don't want to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just turn in as one of the bill sponsors that we're doing this, um, the state had changed the requirement, and so we've been working on this prior to the state. And when the state finally adopted this, we actually moved forward and are really implementing a lot of what the state is requiring. So I understand you're no vote, Councilmember Flynn, but, um, I think that this isn't, uh, we need all tools in our zoning code to be able to, um, address the affordable housing issues that we're seeing. Madam Secretary, please, please put the next item on our screen. Well, no, sorry, Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill sixteen thirty-four.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Aye.
Flores?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parry?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
And President Sandelbaum?
Aye.
Secretary, close the voting, announce the results. Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes, Council Bill sixteen thirty-four has been ordered published. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill sixteen oh seven, a bill for an ordinance establishing a new fund in the Community Development Fund Series for the Dedicated Linkage Fee Fund, sixteen eight one seven. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your questions on Council Bill sixteen oh seven.
Thank you so much. So I gotta find my notes. Oh, that's right. Um, this is the escrow for the Ball Arena. I'm not opposed to this, I just had two simple questions. Um, can you all explain to me what the escrow agreement is for? Um, I understand that these are specific items within the community development funds so that we can better track accountability, but what are we tracking exactly? In other words, what are we putting in the escrow and why are we doing that?
Yeah, they did give them a damn proclamation.
I believe we have someone online from the Department of Finance or housing, host. Great, Brad? Nope.
I believe we have Lian Mitchell online from Host.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Lian Mitchell from the Department of Housing Stability. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, so the escrow agreements, um, will be coming forward as a resolution next week to council on Monday. The special revenue fund is a financial tool that allows the escrow accounts to, um, to be operationalized. And the escrow accounts are part of the High Impact Development Compliance Plan for Ball Arena and the Affordable Housing Plan for River Mile that set aside, um, a percentage of linkage fee revenue, um, to be held in a special account for use by the developers on that site for the affordable housing on that site. And so those are both previous commitments that have already been approved, and these are the tools that we committed to creating to operationalize those commitments and also to ensure that there, that the city is receiving the commitments and the affordable housing as, um, as committed to by the developers on those sites.
So, um, appreciate that. So in the filed materials, it reads, "Any interest earning will be available to offset collateral trust administered past credited to the account balance or spent on affordable housing as directed by the escrow agreement." You said the escrow agreements are going to come to council later on, and this is just the creation of the SRF, which I understand that, but I'm curious as to what, what's in the escrow agreements?
Yeah, the, that's a great question. So the escrow agreements set up, um, the financial process where the city collects that linkage fee and it creates, um, the commitment or the sort of administrative tools for the city to administer those funds, both kind of the finance side and then from Host. Um, for example, on the Ball Arena site, when KSE or other developers are building affordable housing on the site, they have to request those funds from Host or Executive Director, um, or the CFO of Finance can approve those funds, um, once we establish that they are meeting the intent and the requirements of our High Impact Development Compliance Plan.
Okay, so, so each of the, yeah. Oh, no, go ahead, and maybe you cut off, keep going.
Well, each of those commitments, so each of their existing development agreement with the High Impact Development Compliance Plan for Ball Arena and then the River Mile Affordable Housing Plan, each have like very specific requirements for what those funds can be used for. For Ball Arena, it's the retention of up to ten million dollars or twenty percent of the assessed linkage fee that will be held in the escrow account, and then that can be used to support the development of infomer restricted units and affordable housing in their kind of park and transit districts as they build out the development site.
Okay, so, and then, oh, go ahead, keep going, I'm sorry. Your, I think your connection is in and out, so it sounds like you're complete, you're finished, and then you're not, so I'm not intentionally interrupting you, you just go in and out.
Okay, thank you. I'm also having long pauses just to make sure you, I'm getting all your questions. For the River Mile, it's the first six point five million square feet of non-residential linkage fee that will be put into that escrow account, um, to be used specifically for affordable housing on the site.
Got it. So is it, as it says here, "As directed by the escrow agreements," I guess my, what I'm trying to understand is, what is it that we are, what, what is it that we'd be tracking and what would the escrow agreements be directing?
The escrow agreements direct the collection of the linkage fee that's being held specifically for use on the site.
Okay.
So the rest of the eighty percent of the linkage fee will be collected and used by Host to be reinvested in affordable housing throughout the city. Um, and then the, the portion that's allowed to be held for each of these sites, for River Mile and Ball Arena, will, you know, be held and maintained just for the affordable housing on those sites.
Got it.
But that's, of course, as obviously approved.
Understood. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Those are my only questions.
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill seventeen fourteen, a bill for an ordinance amending ordinance nine fifteen, series of twenty twenty-five, concerning the Downtown Development Authority Fund, eleven eighty-eight hundred ninety-three. Councilmember Parry, will you please put Council Bill seventeen fourteen on the floor for publication?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five seventeen fourteen be ordered published.
It has been moved in second. Comments and, and questions by councilmembers, by members of council? Councilmember Alvidres, please go ahead with your questions on Council Bill seventeen fourteen.
Thank you so much, Council President. Um, I do have a question because I've been going back and forth with the Department of Finance on this and our attorney, and the way I'm reading this, it says that, um, we are moving this from an appropriated to a revenue-based, um, source, and my question for our city attorney, Brylin, is can you confirm whether or not, under a revenue-based structure, city council will still review or approve annual spending from the DDDA fund during the budget process? Or will all those expenditures occur without council appropriation?
Uh, Brylin Brody, Assistant City Attorney, and so I made call on the Department of Finance to help me out here, but my understanding is that, um, for a revenue-based fund, essentially it's up to them to, to do the spending based on what is in that account, so you would not be doing the like appropriations through the budget, but, um, you'll still approve contracts over five hundred K, stuff like that.
Okay, so it seems like there will be a change for under five hundred thousand more directly, is that the case?
Not exactly, but I'll call on Department of Finance to come help me out with that one.
Good evening, Councilmember. So what we're trying to do is just make it a revenue-based fund. You are correct that if there were to be an appropriation, city council would have to approve that on the front end. I think what's challenging with the DDDA is just the timing. It's not necessarily on the annual budget process cycle as most of the other appropriations are. We've got a significant number of other revenue-based special revenue funds. So I think that is the thinking behind proposing to convert this from an appropriated to a revenue-based fund. And we also have Donna Wilder from the capital planning and programming team for any more kind of concrete questions about the DDDA and the work of that entity.
I think we should promote Donna because she's subject matter expert who I always go to. Can you promote Donna?
Hi there. Donna Wilder, Department of Finance. I facilitate the operations of the Denver Downtown Development Authority. But thank you so much for this question. This creation of this fund was intended to be a revenue-based fund when created. Unfortunately, there was an error and we didn't catch it in time. But this is a companion operating fund to the capital fund that city council had approved, which is also a revenue-based fund. The city and county of Denver is really a statutory custodian of the DDDA tax increment and the proceeds of debt. And so because of that, it has very restrictive uses. And so the treatment of this fund is allowed to be special revenue fund that is revenue-based. And so we do request that that change be made. This operating fund will be used to fund employee charges, legal fees, and projects occurring within the DDDA authority that are operational in nature. It does not limit city council's authority to approve contracts at or above 500,000 or the petitions for inclusions in which those projects occur upon.
So what kind of things would we no longer oversee in this case?
Yeah, that's a great question. There may be some projects that fall with that outside of those parameters, and that would be a project that occurs on a property that's currently within the boundaries of the district and where there's any contracts below the $500,000 mark or no contracts because it's a city agency performing that work.
Is there any other structure that I can reference that is, you know, similar to this?
Yeah, like I mentioned, the capital fund is, that was approved by city council, I believe, back in November of 2024, is also a revenue-based fund. But I can see if there's any other examples and provide that to you.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful for me. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Yep, thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill seventeen fourteen.
Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Nay.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Nay.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis? Parity?
Nay.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Sawyer? Oh, sorry. Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Ten ayes. Ten ayes. Council Bill seventeen fourteen has been ordered published. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill fifteen ninety, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty twenty-six operating plan and budget for the Rhino Business Improvement District. Councilmember Parity, will you please place Council Bill fifteen ninety on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five fifteen ninety be ordered published. Sorry, final passage, wrong thing.
Be placed upon final.
Upon final consideration and do pass.
Thanks.
Sorry about that.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. So the same as last time we spoke about this, I'm calling this item off for a vote because I was a no on this last week. My issue with this, with these, were the provisions or consideration given to the use of private security over which council will have no oversight on after the vote happens? I saw that, I saw what can lead to this during my time at RTD and combined with my longstanding concerns over the lack of transparency and oversight with bids generally, I'm not going to be able to say yes on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill fifteen ninety.
Also, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Parity?
Thanks, thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Councilmember Lewis. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I share a lot of those concerns and wonder if it's a topic where we may need specific legislation thinking and talking about private security. So I'm glad that Councilmember Lewis continues to raise the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill fifteen ninety.
Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Nay.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes. Council Bill fifteen ninety has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill fifteen ninety-four, a bill for an ordinance approving the twenty twenty-six operating plan and budget for the downtown Denver Business Improvement District. Councilmember Parity, would you please place Council Bill fifteen ninety-four on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Bill twenty-five fifteen ninety-four be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you so much. So same thing, I'm calling this one off for a vote for the exact same reason as last time, so I won't waste you all's time. But I had some learnings and some lessons from my time at RTD, and this is the only time that our council members have an opportunity to be able to vote on this. Otherwise, we have no oversight over what happens thereafter. So, thank you.
Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bill fifteen ninety-four. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Nay.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson? Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Twelve ayes. Twelve ayes. Council Bill fifteen ninety-four has passed. Madam Secretary, please put the next item on our screens. Council Bill eighteen thirteen, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations to pay the expenses of conducting the public business for the year twenty twenty-six and for the purposes required by charter and other law, also other known as the Long Bill. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead with your comments on Council Bill eighteen thirteen.
Thank you. So this is what is called the Long Bill, which is the codification of the city budget into ordinance. And I just wanted to call this item out tonight to explain why I was, why I was one of the no votes on the budget last week, but will be a yes on this item tonight. So this bill makes record of where the money is located from the budget and assigns the money in the budget into specific spending pots for the next year. Without those ordinance, the money could potentially be reverted to the unexpendable fund balance, which we probably don't want that to happen, which would nullify the work that council did to amend the budget two weeks ago. For that reason, I'm a yes on this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parity, will you please put Council Resolution fifteen eighty on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution twenty-five dash fifteen eighty be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Parity, your motion to amend?
I move that Council Resolution twenty-five fifteen eighty be amended in the following particulars on page one, line seven, strike annually.
It has been moved and seconded.
I'm so sorry. Madam President, we still need to move her in a second or three.
Oh, sorry. Did I not do that? I thought we...
We're about to.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Resolution, uh, did we do it now? There we go. Right? It's good now?
Yes, all good. Thank you.
Comments by members of council? Councilmember Parity?
Thank you, Council President. The purpose of the amendment is just to correct a drafting error. The proposed agreement will provide 3,099 units over the lifetime of the agreement, not each year. So just correcting that. Sorry?
Which one are we? We're on Council Resolution fifteen eighty.
Fifteen eighty. Oh.
Yeah, that's on the floor. Madam Secretary, who see that it's not on the floor?
Um, yeah.
There we go.
So, right, as it came through committee, it said that the community firm needed to serve 3,099 undigated households every year, but in fact, we're only contracting with them to do that over three years. So a big difference in workload for them. Got to get it right.
Okay. Councilmember Flynn?
Thank you. Would you clarify, we're holding this?
No, she's amending it.
Just a correcting, just a correcting amendment. That was what was just moved and seconded was the amendment to remove the word annually.
All right. Don't we then have to refile it? We can't amend, council can't amend an agreement. We can only adopt it or reject it.
Uh, Bridland, oh, sorry. Bridland Roddy, Assistant City Attorney. We're not amending the agreement. We're just amending the title to the bill.
Okay.
Fifteen eighty.
Okay, we can do that on the floor? Because when that previously happened, we had to refile it.
So this isn't a bill. It doesn't need to be republished. It's a resolution, so it is able to be amended on the floor.
And Councilmember Flynn, the underlying contract is correct.
Certainly.
Just making sure.
Okay. I'm not opposed to doing things more quickly, but I believe we've had to refile things when they had faulty titles rather than amend them on the floor.
Is John Griffin?
I could be wrong.
Is John Griffin online?
I will say John.
Can you promote John Griffin? Just so that we have it from not saying, Bridland, that you're not correct, but.
Hello, John Griffin, Deputy Legislative Counsel.
John, did you hear Councilmember Flynn's question?
I missed the first part of it, if you wouldn't mind repeating. Thank you, John. My recollection is that in the past, when there was an error in the title of a resolution, that we had to pull it and refile it with the correct title. But you're saying, and Bridland was saying, we can amend the title on the floor here?
Yes, that's correct, since it hasn't been published yet. Because it's a resolution, we are able to just amend the title on the floor and make the update.
Okay, thank you. As I said, I'm not opposed to doing things more quickly, but just want to make sure we weren't jumping the line. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam Secretary, roll call on the amendment to Council Resolution fifteen eight.
Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The amendment to Council Resolution fifteen eighty has passed. Councilmember Parity, will you now please put Council Resolution fifty eighty on the floor for adoption as amended?
I move that Council Resolution twenty-five fifteen eighty be adopted as amended.
Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Resolution fifteen eighty as amended.
Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. Council Resolution fifteen eighty has been, as amended, has been adopted as amended. This concludes the items to be called out. Tonight, there will be a required public hearing on Council Resolution sixteen hundred, City Council sitting as the ex officio boards and director for the Ball Park Denver Drew Denver General Improvement District, approving a work plan, adopting a budget, and making appropriations for the budget twenty twenty-six year and approving middle levy and amending the twenty twenty-five budget. Council Resolution sixteen oh one, City Council sitting as the ex officio board directors for the Denver Fourteenth Street General Improvement District to approve the twenty twenty-six work plan, twenty twenty-six budget, including capital charges and twenty twenty-six maintenance charges, and making appropriations for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year, and amending the twenty twenty-five budget. Council Resolution sixteen oh two, City Council sitting as ex officio board members of the Great Gateway Village Improvement District, approving a work plan, adopting a budget, and making appropriations for the budget year twenty twenty-six. I will get to that. Luke, thank you. And approving middle levy, Council Resolution sixteen oh three, City Council sitting as ex officio board directors, adopting a budget, imposing capital charges and maintenance charges, approving a middle levy and making appropriations for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year, and Council Resolution sixteen oh four, City Council sitting as ex officio board of directors of the Sun Valley Denver General Improvement District, approving a work plan, adopting a budget, approving a middle levy, and making appropriations for the budget year twenty twenty-six. And a courtesy public hearing, fifteen seventy-eight, approving and accepting the downtown Denver area plan, which plan shall become a part of the comprehensive plan twenty forty for the city and county of Denver pursuant to the provisions of twelve dash sixty-one of the Denver Rides Municipal Code. And all bills for introduction are ordered published. Councilmembers, remember that this is a consent or block vote, and you'll need a vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance. Call out an item for a separate vote. Councilmember Parity, will you please put the resolutions and proclamations for adoptions and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
I move that the resolutions and proclamations be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed on final consideration and do pass and block for the following items. Twenty-five series nineteen eleven, sixteen thirty-eight, seventeen oh seven, seventeen oh eight, sixteen eighty-nine, sixteen ninety-seven, sixteen ninety-nine, seventeen hundred, seventeen oh two, seventeen oh three, seventeen twenty-one, fifteen sixty-nine, fifteen seventy, fifteen seventy-one, sixteen twenty-six, sixteen twenty-seven, ten twenty-seven, sixteen eighty-eight, sixteen ninety, sixteen ninety-one, sixteen ninety-two, sixteen ninety-three, sixteen ninety-four, sixteen ninety-five, sixteen ninety-six, seventeen forty-five, sixteen nineteen, sixteen thirty-nine, fifteen twenty-nine, fifteen thirty-two, sixteen twenty-eight, sixteen forty, sixteen forty-one, sixteen forty-two, sixteen ninety-eight, seventeen oh one, fifteen sixty-seven, fifteen eighty-eight, fifteen eighty-nine, fifteen ninety-one, fifteen ninety-two, fifteen ninety-three, fifteen ninety-five, fifteen ninety-six, fifteen ninety-seven, fifteen ninety-eight, fifteen ninety-nine, sixteen oh five, sixteen oh six. And that's it.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Thirteen ayes. Thirteen ayes. The resolutions and proclamations have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. If there are no objections to members of council, we will recess until five thirty before convening the regular meeting. City Council will provide a half hour general public comment session to hear from the public on city matters, except for any matter that is scheduled for a legally required public hearing. The general public comment session will begin at five P M. Tonight's session is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam or Jasmin, would you please introduce yourself and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Yes, of course. Thank you for having us. Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Guzman with the CLC, joining you virtually and along with my colleague Jasmin, who are being interpreted today's meeting into Spanish. Please allow me a quick moment while I give instructions in Spanish on how to access interpretation. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Samuel Guzman con la CLC. Igualmente con mi colega Jasmin, estaremos interpretando la reunión de hoy al español. Si se une con nosotros virtualmente a través de Zoom, busquen su pantalla un icono del globo que dice "interpretación". Oprime ese botón y de ahí seleccione la opción de escuchar en español. Si se une con nosotros presencialmente y está en la cámara, por favor, busque hacia el fondo a la derecha. Encontrará un asistente que le podrá dar audífonos para poder escuchar en español. Muchas gracias and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sam. City Council provides a half hour general public comment session to hear from the public on city matters, except for any matter that are scheduled to have a public hearing. To maximize time for public comments, council will not offer comments or responses from the day as city council members staff may. City Council members staff may contact speakers following their comment if they raise matters that lend themselves to follow-up. All speakers should begin by stating their names, each person will have three minutes to speak. For those participating in, in person, when called upon, please come to the podium. A timer on the presentation monitor, monitor will display, display your remaining time. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until you are promoted as speaker. Then accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. You will see the timer on your screen counting down. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech, direct your comments to council as a whole, and refrain from individual or personal attacks, including disparaging speakers' motives. First up, we have virtually Tatiana Spector. Next up, we have David Pardo.
Oh, come on. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh, this is David Pardo, usually you either hear from me in chambers or you hear from me from my A D U. But today, I am standing, uh, on Alameda, which, uh, is a street that we, for years, had been hoping would be turned into a safer street. Uh, right now, I happen to be standing right in front of a development that is full of homes that I believe started about five million dollars. And one of the residents inside this development hired a lobbyist, uh, not too long ago, uh, in the hopes of stopping the transition of Alameda from four lanes to three, to make it safer for all of us who live in the neighborhood. Uh, interestingly enough, two blocks directly south of this development, full of five-plus million-dollar homes, into which I've seen in ten minutes over half a million dollars in automobiles driving to. Those, that was two vehicles, by the way, not like a bunch of vehicles. Two blocks south of here is where the head of Dottie lives. Uh, so, to me, this is an example of something I've never seen in Denver before. I, I, Denver has its issues, Denver may be beholden to interests that I don't always think are the best, but today, or over the last week or so, we've really seen something I've never seen before, which is Denver as city government, our Department of Transportation and infrastructure being beholden to the interests of not our one percent, but our point one percent. And that is why I'm standing here today on Alameda in front of a development full of roughly fourteen five-plus million-dollar homes, two blocks north of where the head of Dottie lives in a two-and-a-half million-dollar home. Uh, talking about a street which, by the way, here is only two lanes, but where I live, it's four. And people have been clipped by car windows, people have, uh, had their cars drive directly into their yards, they've had property damage caused by the speeds at which people travel on Alameda. And so, what I beg of you, after describing all of this, is that you guys do something. I know you guys are not in charge of Dottie over at City Council, I know this is not your fault. But you guys did just approve a whole bunch of bills, most of which put money into different departments. We cannot allow this city to be beholden to these moneyed interests. If you guys need to stop the funds, if you guys need to do what they did in D C for forty-plus days and stop funding our government so that we can take it back and so that it is not owned by people driving half-million-dollar Bentley Bentigas, please do it, thank you.
Thank you, next up, we have Thomas Tor- Toppero? Toppero?
Oh, I feel so much better. Thomas Toppero, I am a resident of the Spear neighborhood. I just took the knife out of my back that we were stabbed with by Dottie about ten days ago. Alameda Avenue was promised to be safer, was promised to be more, uh, comfortable for all of our neighbors. We need that promise to be fulfilled. Just like David said, we realize you are not Dottie, you are not the king of Denver, you are not the president of Denver, you're not even the C E O of Denver. We respect that you are doing what you can to represent us. We need to make it even more so for you guys to be able to support us. The Alameda lane repurposing was supposed to be a road diet. Alameda is only sixty feet wide. Almost all of us in the city, including all of us here, most of us in this room, live on a street that is only sixty feet wide right away. However, Alameda was a local street that is an arterial now with four lanes of thirty mile-per-hour traffic. No turn lanes, except a lot of people turn, which is why there's over seven hundred collisions reported by D P F, by D P D in the last decade. Imagine if your street were turned into a four-lane street with yellow center lines and two dollar, two white dotted lines. And all the traffic that was supposed to go from, that was, that is now going around your neighborhood, went right in front of your house. Now add insult to injury and move your front door five feet from the sidewalk. That's what my neighbors face every day. This isn't a nice-to-have, this is reversing what we did to our people. My neighborhood has Lincoln, which is another local street that was arterialized. We're not going to undo that one. But our, but Alameda does not need to be an arterial. It is a unique situation. We had community invol- uh, community input by all neighborhoods, Spear, West Wash Park, and Washington Park, that is being completely ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, next up, we have Ian Frash, Frach?
Hello, Council. Um, so, I'm here to talk, I'm Ian Frash, I'm here to talk about Alameda as well, similar to Thomas. I live in Wash Park West, just a few blocks south of Alameda, and I walk and drive Alameda. Often, I'm often crossing it or walking in to get the businesses, I'm often biking across it. Sometimes I'm driving across it, and it always sucks, sucks to drive. Uh, when you're driving, it feels like you're gonna hit somebody or you're gonna hit the curb because it's too many lanes, four lanes cram into too small of a space, it shouldn't have that many lanes. When you're walking, there's basically no buffer between the hot, the sidewalk and high-speed traffic. I was turning back from the dental store the other way, and I may have almost died, and I'm being serious here, because a woman walked into me coming out of one of the businesses there, almost walked into me, and I almost got pushed into traffic right next to like a pickup truck flying by. Uh, to be that close to death and destruction on a daily basis is really dystopian, I have to say. Um, so, Dottie created a pretty logical solution with us into do a road diet, make it three lanes with center turning and have a little bit of a buffer from the sidewalk that would have reduced the amount of chaos on the street and w- wouldn't make it so crammed and, and dangerous feeling. I was on, I was at the twenty twenty-four, uh, public open house meeting, I was at Lincoln Elementary to talk about this, and the feedback was really positive. It seemed like a pretty good design from Dottie, and we were told it was gonna be installed this year in the spring, and they even put up signs saying, we're gonna install it. And then they just changed their mind last minute. And really, it's not about my thoughts on what should happen to the street, it's the fact that the professionals at Dottie, the transportation and safety experts, not me, they chose and finalized the design with a public community input process that had a lot of positive feedback from the neighborhood. After they finalized it, they delayed it and then they watered it down last minute after complaints from a wealthy individual who set up a website and got a news article complaining about it. That's not a democratic process, that's not a fair process, and I feel it's unethical from Dottie and they're ignoring the wants of the neighborhood. Uh, I ask the council to pressure Dottie to, uh, restore the original design for Alameda Ave as is without spending a hundred thousand dollars to make it worse, which is what they're planning to do. And at least, I want Councilor Abstadi to, don't spend this hundred K to redesign it until they li- they listen to us, since they paused it to listen to this wealthy individual. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, next up, we have Erin Johnson. Next up, we have Robert Davis.
Good evening, City Council, thank you very much. Uh, I'm calm, I'm here to speak on the nomination of Al Gardner for the Executive Director of, uh, Safety. And I'm here to speak, uh, first of all, I want to say that I know Mr. Gardner outside of his capacity of, uh, Executive Director, I find him to be a very, uh, decent and intelligent man, so I'm not speaking on any personal issue, but rather, the position of Director of Safety and how important that, that position is for our city. And the, how important it is for whoever is going to serve in that position to have a requisite experience, uh, in either first responder, uh, administration to, uh, in law enforcement or something that would qualify them to lead, uh, a department of that magnitude. You know, the ci- the Department of Safety is the single largest budget, uh, for the city of Denver. And so, whoever's going to lead that particular office needs to be someone who has, uh, the experience. Uh, I've had an opportunity to hear Mr. Gardner speak at several community, uh, forums where he expressed that at this time, we need someone who's not necessarily, uh, affiliated with, uh, law enforcement. And I would not argue with that point, but what I would say is that while we don't necessarily need someone who, uh, has a history in law enforcement, we do need someone who understands the various issues that are facing public safety today, whether that be fire, whether that be sheriff, whether that be police. What do I mean by that? We are experiencing unprecedented attacks on the national level with, uh, the president sending National Guard in. We are experiencing a mayor who is, you know, disregarding this council's, uh, advice around flock. We are, uh, having challenges around, uh, the, uh, undermining and usurping of the disciplinary process, uh, with education-based discipline. So, we need someone who truly has an understanding of these various issues and many other, uh, various issues to actually serve in that office. Secondly, this process was not, did not involve the community. Uh, several of you who are here were here when, uh, Mayor Hancock, uh, had a community process whereby he would allow various community members to be a part of the interviewing process, the selection process, and so we have called for something similar like that, uh, through these. We did not have that with the sheriff or the chief of police or the fire chief, and now we're not having that again with the Director of Safety. And so, I'm encouraging this council to send back to the mayor and, uh, ask him to find someone, I believe that, right now especially, we have a myriad of individuals across this nation who are more than qualified, who would love to assume this position and who would do a phenomenal job. And I would encourage the, uh, City Council to ask the mayor to do that, thank you very much.
Thank you, next up, we have Chris Miller, virtually, Chris, if he'll accept the promotion.
Uh, thank you, City Council, my name is Chris Miller, I live in the Locust District and Spear Neighborhoods. Uh, I've lived here since I moved to Denver in twenty fourteen, a short little stand-up in Boulder. Uh, I'm also here to talk about the, uh, regression on Alameda's safety. Uh, and very specifically, I want to lift up, uh, my councilmember, uh, you know, Representative Alvi- Alvidres. Uh, when she heard that Dottie was considering discarding years of work and years of community engagement, she reached out to all the people who had been engaged in the process for years, uh, to really work to say, uh, I want to make sure this gets over the finish line. I see that as, uh, you know, great to have for my representative, but also, you know, it's, it's a small and large act of good governance. In an era where there's a lot of distrust in the government, government right now, uh, it's, you know, heartwarming to see someone fight for, uh, fight for improvements. She went out and made media hits, um, you know, she talked to the communities in rural contexts, like what was going on. Uh, but in the battle of, uh, you know, good governments versus Dottie, it sounds like good governments is, is losing. Uh, and, uh, you know, seeing the news today where it's possible that, uh, you know, the Denver Summit Stadium might get moved away, um, from, from Baker as a Alvidres's district, uh, you know, which would hurt a lot. Uh, and so, City Council, I would ask you to stand strong both in asserting your power and with, uh, Councilmember Alvidres as she fights for, for good governance and a Denver that works a little better for everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle Pas- Pascal?
Hello, um, my name is Michelle Pascal, I am a resident at Park Avenue West.
You use the microphone so you can?
Thank you. Sorry, um, I'm a resident at Park Avenue West Transitional Housing, um. It's, it's, I'm happy to be there, I'm thankful to be off the streets. It's just now, I've completed my two-year program. When we first got there, the first ninety days, I received a lot of help to get my I D, that was stolen from me, I had a lot of birth certificates, I had everything that I needed in the first ninety days. Then they fired fourteen caseworkers, they all left the facility. They would lacked on bringing us another caseworker to help us, the house. Nothing has been done since we got there, the first ninety days, that's it. After that, we find out that they are closing the La Quinta facility where I live, and they're telling us that there's no vouchers. And when we got there, we signed a contract stating that once we get into transitional, the next step in housing is to receive our voucher. We were told we had vouchers now that we're almost done with our program, they're saying there's no vouchers, they're closing down the facility, they are forcing, um, us to go to Renew Village, which is a single dwelling place and it's for single people only. I'm a married woman, I have a husband, that's my aide, he has him with my day-to-day living, I'm blind. Um, a few people there are couples, but they are separating us all. They made the law, the housing laws that a woman, a handicapper, son or man cannot be separated from their aide, living aide or partner, they separated me and my husband, put me on, tried to put me on the ninth floor. He, they put him on the eighth floor, the five keys only go up to the floor that you live on. So, if something happens to me and I'm on the ninth floor, he can't even get to me. And they're not, in, in their, in their laws, they think that they're not gonna block us anybody to force them to go anywhere. We've never been shown any other place. Because they're closing, they're trying to force everyone to go there, it's not accommodative living for me. I cannot live on the ninth floor, take my dog downstairs to use the bathroom every few, you know, couple hours. And I need my aide, basically, they are forcing us to do this. If, if, they, we were told in a meeting that either we go to Renew Village or to a shelter or to family. We didn't have a choice in there, there is no vouchers. Well, where is our voucher? That's what I want to know, when we got there, that we had vouchers when we got there two years ago, now there's no voucher? I want to know what happened to our vouchers with the security, after the caseworkers were gone? The security got fired, the only time that we had any good security is when they were there. Now, we have no security, there's homeless people breaking into the rooms as they, you know, they try to house everybody. They try to house everybody, there's secure, people breaking into rooms, there's no security there. My husband signed a lease at Renew, at, uh, under duress because he thought that if they kicked us out, we wouldn't have anywhere to go, and he signed it under duress. He shouldn't have had to do that, these are laws that they made, I'm just saying, well, I deserve to have my aide, and I hope that something can change and we can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Terry Leiburger. Terry? Next, next up, we have Christopher Gottrey. G- Gottrey? Next up, we have Susan Lucero?
Good evening, City Council, my name is Susan Lucero. I'm here tonight to share my experience that began at Park Avenue and Renew Village. I shared a room with my son Lazarus. We were homeless. Um, so our, um, we had a lot of same experiences as Michelle. My son was given his own room. He eventually, he had warrants. He eventually got picked up on him, of course, and one of the case managers told me, you know, where's your son? I said, I don't really know. He's grown up. And she said, well, we need his room now. We need his room. We need to know, you know, if he's coming back. And I told him he was in jail, you know, and she said, well, you need to clean out his room and get his stuff out or throwing it out. I said, okay, she says, we need it right now. That was a year and a half ago. Today, as of today, nobody's ever been in that room again. My son is out on the street. And, you know, it's, when you're out on the street, it's hard for him to maintain and keep, you know, to just do that. It's, it's horrible, but I feel like the, the staff there needs to be trained with some, they need to learn dignity and respect. They're so disrespectful. And it's bad enough being homeless as it is, but the treatment, they make us feel so degraded, and it's horrible. My husband was in a halfway house at the time and I, you know, I told him, I said, he's going to be getting out. Like, I need to know that he could come live with me. And they said, we need, we'll find out, we'll find out. They, they blew me off for several months, and then finally he was, it was time for him to get out. And they didn't have an answer for me. My husband ended up squandering the way his, his, when he stayed in the halfway house pretty much because of, you know, they were, just kept putting this on hold. He was diabetic. He had to go to the hospital four times. Um, just to have a place to, you know, stay in. It was, it was, it was bad, but it was a very, I believe that that was like the beginning of the end for our marriage because of stress on our marriage and my husband, I think, started like shopping around for somebody else to live with. He, he just, he didn't eventually, was allowed to come live with me at Park Avenue, but they, um, they forced us to go to Renew and put us in separate rooms. And I haven't heard from him since, for, since May. He just left and he didn't do the move with me, so um, Park Avenue has a horrible mold problem. And it's, it's affecting all of us. There's people there that have medical conditions and it's, you know, they're, I feel like, they feel like they're didn't, it's not that I'm getting better. Um, when I moved to Renew Village, I asked him how much, you know, i- is there visiting hours? Like, I can't even have my grandchildren. They lied to me and told me there's no visiting hours, but lo and behold, there's visiting hours, but my time is up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Val Black. Next up, we have Juan Manuel. Next up, we have Antonio, Antonia Gutierrez online in Chambers. Next up, we have Catherine Fontaine online. If you'll accept the question, Catherine?
Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah. Um, so I'm, I'm here also to talk about the Dottie repurposing, uh, the last minute change in design and um echoing some in the comments, it just never made sense for this to be a four-lane road. It's terrifying to drive on. It's terrifying when you have to make a left-hand turn and you're looking in the rearview mirror and you're worried about somebody rearlining you or side-swiping you. Um, it's, it's just a, it's a terrible situation, and I really don't understand why uh, Dottie, after all of the public engagement, um, has reversed course um and changed it. And uh, I forgot to mention that um I am uh resident of West Washington Park. Um, and I live on South Pearl Street. Um, and yeah, it just, um, it just makes me feel so uh cynical. Uh, cause from where I sit, it looks like uh a very rich person who doesn't even live in the affected area uh launched an extremely well-funded astroturf effort. Um, was able to publish uh an article in a newspaper that apparently they own, um, pay for lobbyists, and through all of this, just reverse all of the neighborhood engagement, just kind of helicoptering at the last minute. And that's not how democracies, democracy is supposed to work. Um, and um, you know, the, the original design was supported by the people in the neighborhood. Um, and it, it's just really distressing, and I hope that Dottie uh can be convinced to uh go back to the original design. Uh, so that's, that's all I have to say. I'm really disappointed.
Thank you. Next up, we have Leon Vaez. Leon? Next up, we have Jamie Lividitis.
Hello, my name is Jamie Lividitis, and I lived in the corridor impacted by the Alameda Lane Repurposing Project. I live in District Seven. During my time in my home, I've seen a cyclist hit by a car. I've seen countless accidents in front of my home. My property has been struck three times by out-of-control vehicles. And my daughter was hit by a car walking home from school. There are five bus stops and three schools between Logan and Marion, and there are pedestrians everywhere, many of whom are children. I'm here to express my deep disappointment in the recent changes to the district. The original design was a result of a thorough public process and was funded, vetted, and ready to go. But after Jillian Schutz, a person whose family donates considerable money to many organizations the mayor supports, when she began opposing it and funding that opposition, Dottie scaled the project back at the expense of community safety. I won't talk about what the original plan did. I, I know that you guys have heard this over and over again, but I'm just here to say, people are not exaggerating. It's very scary living in this area. It's very scary sending my three kids out the door, walking to school because I know very well how dangerous it is. Very well. I don't feel that a person who is well-funded should be able to derail a project that was years and years in the making and so much advocacy. That doesn't feel like Denver to me. And I know that you all, I know that Dottie answers to the mayor, but you all do not. Please, please show up for us on this project, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tyler Martin. Tyler? Next up, we have Jamie Runney. Jamie? Next up, we have Chester Chen on Zoom. If you'll accept the promos- promotions?
Uh huh, is this working?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, sorry, give me one second here. Um, you know, I'm Chester Chen. Um, I'm also here to share thoughts on the plans for Alameda. Um, I moved to East Wash Park in twenty twenty-three with two kids who are now two and four years old. I'm a little lost, Erin. Um, my favorite way to get around is on a cargo bike with two child seats on the back for my kids. Um, the infrastructure definitely prioritizes our travel over other modes. Um, the most, the main streets are designed as not safe for pedestrians or bikes, but with some planning, we can usually find a route where I feel the risk is kind of acceptable. Um, but we can't avoid a four-lane road or, or wider. Um, that's, that's always the least safe and least comfortable part of our trip. Um, so that's why to me it was really great news when I learned that there were plans for Alameda to become one lane traveling direction to improve safety and make more space for other modes of getting around. Um, and I was also real disappointed to find out that at the last minute, plans were changed to keep it a four-lane road where, where there were high rates of injury and um, it's, it's just not, it's not safe for drivers and it's not even more not safe for people on other modes of transportation. Um, so I feel that there's more public space being used for private car infrastructure, encouraging more car trips, imposing more safety risks on others, making noise and pollution. I'm hoping we can do better. Uh, please, please prioritize uh safety and other modes of transportation when it comes to the plans for Alameda and street design in general going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker for the night will be Dr. Lisa Calderon.
Good evening, Council. I'm Dr. Lisa Calderon and representing Women Uprising. I'm here to speak against the nomination of Al Gardner. Um, but before I give my reasons, I'm going to give a quick timeline of the public safety managers, executive directors that we've had. Nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-four, Beth McCann was our first woman manager of safety, who later became the first woman DA. Nineteen ninety-four to, to two thousand, Theda Butch Montoya. He was a nine news producer who um oversaw controversies, including the deadly No Knock Raid of Ishmael Mena. Two thousand, two thousand two, Ari Zavars, former DPD chief, um, who also oversaw the controversial spy files. Two thousand three to two thousand ten, Al Lacabe, who transitioned us from uh comparative discipline to the matrix. Uh, and Ron Pareja from two thousand ten, he only lasted a few months because of his um defense of police beatings. March uh, two thousand eleven, Mary Malatesta also only lasted a few months. She was kind of an interim. March, also two thousand eleven, Charlie Garcia, a few months as well. July, two thousand eleven, Ashley Kilroy, also a few months. Two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, Alex Martinez, former Supreme Court Justice, resigned after a tumultuous tenure. Two thousand thirteen to two thousand and eighteen, Stephanie O'Malley. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty, Troy Riggs, controversial during Michael Hancock's sexual harassment scandal. Two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, Murphy Robinson. He oversaw the George Floyd beating protest, which Denver is still paying multimillions out for. Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five, Armando Soldate, nice guy, but not very memorable. And two thousand twenty-five, uh, now we're looking at Al Gardner. You know, this is not a consequential appointment, and I disagree with some of the council's comments in the safety meeting that the mayor should just get the pick that he wants. We as task, taxpayers pay for those mistakes. We pay for those payouts, those settlements, those beatings. This uh appointee is one of the least qualified in the history of these managers of safety. It is a disrespect to the office to have someone so unqualified, to go from a fourth-tier mayoral candidate to the General Services Director, to our Deputy Mayor, to now overseeing our most powerful public safety institutions. And the fact that women did not get a shot at this position and that Al Gardner does not have a good reason for why women of color, and particularly black women, are overlooked for opportunities and advancements in the public safety department, other than to say, oh, we just don't have good candidates. There are plenty of women of color who could have competed for this position, and it'd be a travesty to not use your power to deny this appointment. Thank you.
Miss me with that, boss? Uh, sorry, I lost my script. That concludes our general public comment session. Let me see if I could wing this. Shoot. That concludes our general public comment session. If we did not hear from you tonight, please um sign up again. Our sign up starts on Thursday, and our next public comment session will be next Monday. Thank you. Council will now reconvene from our earlier session. There is no unfinished business from the earlier session. There are two proclamations being read this evening. Councilmember Watson Lewis Parity, would you please read Proclamation nineteen oh seven?
Yes. Proclamation twenty-five nineteen oh seven, the Upworth Foundation presents the annual Denver Feeder Family Thanksgiving Distribution honoring the legacy of Daddy Bruce Randolph. Whereas, over six decades ago, community icon Daddy Bruce Randolph began a powerful tradition of feeding Denver families in need, a legacy that has grown into one of Colorado's most enduring acts of compassion and unity. And?
Whereas, the Upworth Foundation continues this tradition as a beacon of service and community care, ensuring that the spirit of giving remains a cornerstone of Denver's character and extending its reach to families throughout the Denver community and beyond. And?
Whereas, the foundation's signature initiative, the Denver Feeder Family Thanksgiving Distribution, extends the warmth of the holiday to thousands of households each year through the provision of food baskets and year-round community programs that uplift families. And? Whereas, through the extraordinary generosity of local residents, businesses, faith institutions, and volunteers, more than one hundred and eighty thousand Denver-area families have received support, including seven thousand five hundred Thanksgiving baskets in twenty twenty-four alone. And?
Whereas, under the leadership, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, uh, Zymora Yanik, Executive Director of the Upworth Foundation, and Reverend Frank Jones, Executive Director of the Daddy Bruce Randolph Legacy Foundation. The twenty twenty-five campaign, guided by the theme of gather, give, grow, invites Denver residents to unite as one community, give generously, and grow stronger together, so every family may share a Thanksgiving meal. And?
Whereas, financial and community sponsors for the twenty twenty-five distribution include Reconstruction Road Ministries, the Daddy Bruce Randolph Legacy Foundation, CMTS LLC, the Why Not Foundation, the Drop One Oh Four Seven, Denver City Council District Nine, Denver Human Services, the Neighborhood Equity and Stabilization Division, and countless community members whose partnership fuels this effort. And? Whereas, inspired by Daddy Bruce Randolph and carried forward by the late Reverend Ronald Woody and Elder King Harris, this intergenerational legacy endures through this steadfast dedication of volunteers, faith leaders, community partners, and donors who selflessly give of their talent, time, and resources. And?
Whereas, the Denver Feeder Family Initiative stands as an embodiment of Denver's highest values in unity, generosity, and inclusiveness, extending beyond the provision of meals to cultivate belonging, dignity, and sheer joy during the holiday season.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, Section One, that the Denver City Council recognizes the substantial contributions of the Upworth Foundation and the enduring impact of Daddy Bruce Randolph's vision, which has strengthened the community fabric and exemplified the highest ideals of service and brotherhood. And Section Two, that the clerk of the City and County of Denver shall affix the seal of the City and County of Denver to this proclamation, and that a copy be transmitted to Zymora Yanik, Executive Director of the Upworth Foundation.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your motion to adopt.
I move that Proclamation twenty-five nineteen oh seven be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of the council. I'll start with this sponsor, Watson Lewis Parity. Who would like to go first?
Go ahead. All right, I'll go first, but I'll be brief. Um, because I think the District Nine member, who grew up in District Nine, probably has some things to say. But um, one of the things that I um like to point out is that um Daddy Bruce learned to cook from his grandmother, um, who had grown up enslaved. And so I just think um that line, you know, um, from everyone who benefits from this meal every year, um, back to someone who lives that life is a really strong comment on our history and um, how much it reverberates through to today. Um, and you know, she, through her resilience, um, passed that down to her grandson, and he passed all this down to us, made it into something really beautiful. Um, I also want to point out that this is a year when food insecurity has, um, it's never not been an issue. It's gotten worse and worse and worse in recent years in Denver. Um, and it's sort of, um, you know, burst into the public eye over the last couple of months, um, because people were thrown into a much worse situation by the pause and snap benefits. Even though that's over, um, it's not over because folks spent money that they needed for rent on groceries, so um, the outpouring of support around Denver, um, for people, especially leading up to Thanksgiving, to make sure that everyone has food, has been really, really beautiful. Um, and I think we probably need to sustain that for a little bit longer because it's going to take people a minute to um get back on their feet after um those weeks where they were having to really stretch. So um, I wish that nobody in our community faced that, but I am so grateful, especially um when it comes to Thanksgiving, um, for those who, who helped put a meal on the table, and so grateful for the Upworth Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President, and um to the Upworth Foundation and to the amazing leaders in the audience, uh, this event is a uh, This event is a one day, a one month, months of planning and coordination. But within our community, we bring families together. Our culture is built when us break and bread together. And providing food in a time when our families have been targeted by the federal administration to starve. It's been targeted for direct harm when it is absolutely unnecessary. This proclamation is not simply a thank you to you for this day, but a thank you for upholding our culture and our process of making sure that we feed all who are in need. And we give all that we can give to community always. The tradition that you uplift, the tradition that you sustain, is a tradition of our people. It is our culture. It is who we are and what we bring to Denver. And no matter what hard times we face, and as Councilmember Parity correctly stated, this SNAP benefit targeted attack on our community has just begun. January, we're gonna be facing the same thing again. We also know that HR1, which is that horrible bill those passed, is removing tens of thousands, almost millions, of folks throughout this country from receiving any benefits at all. So this step that you take in this month to ensure that you're providing food for souls, for folks who need it, is an example of what we as a city need to do strategically. Because this battle doesn't end on a quote Thanksgiving Day. This is a fight that we as a community have been doing since we were brought here against our will, feeding each other and feeding families around us. And this proclamation speaks to that tradition. And it speaks to the soul of our community that we will not be scared, we will not be intimidated, that we will do what the government can't. We'll continue sustaining our folks, sustaining our families, and bringing forward the joy that comes with breaking bread together. So thank you to the Upworth Foundation. Thank you to your focus on our community, and thank you for demonstrating the example that the city and county of Denver must lead in and lean into in coming, these coming years as we face continued attacks by this administration. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'll keep it brief, but just wanted to thank the organizers for your continued commitment to community, to bring this tradition, and to keep this tradition alive. I know from many folks, including you all, that you've had to scale back because you've seen donations scale back in terms of being able to come, to be able to be more expansive for communities. And so I really appreciate your commitment. I remember fondly participating in the Daddy Bruce giveaway during, as a child, and just remember it being a space of joy and not shame. And so often, when you were in need of assistance or help, that those spaces can feel like spaces of shame because you were somehow letting yourself down or letting your families down. And it never felt like that as a child or even as an adult, when I had my own children, my own child, and had to utilize the same service. And so I just wanted to thank you all for your commitment and honoring the legacy of Daddy Bruce. And he has some really dope pictures that Timber was able to find that I hope that someone remembers me in such a beautiful way as well, and that my commitment to community is carried on in the way that his legacy is, because it's just really, really cool to see that continue. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the sponsors for bringing this to our attention. And it's such an important event for the residents of all of Denver, so we just can't thank you enough. Madam Secretary, real call. Councilmembers Sawyer? I'll be the first. Hi. Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore? Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President, send a vote.
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close voting, announce the results. Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes. The proclamation 1907 has been adopted. We now have time for the acceptance speech. Sponsors, who would you like to invite up to accept the proclamation?
I know that I destroyed your name in a proclamation, so please help me out, sister. I pronounced it Zaymora Yanik.
It's all good. Zaymora Yanik.
Very good. That sounds much better. Please.
It's all good. I appreciate. I just want to say thank you so much for acknowledging the legacy and just talking about the tradition, listening to each of you. As a transplant here to Denver, this was one of the first activities that I did. We were talking about growing up, is that they brought me here to volunteer. And then I came back year after year after year. And now I can proudly state that I am the Executive Director for the Upworth Foundation as of January. So I got to see the growth. I got to see the welcome into the community. And this is a legacy that this is, this is who Denver is, you know, when I think about this, because it's about bringing us all together as a community. And as you said, not to shame anyone, but to make sure everybody has food. It is, this was a really hard year, coming out of last year with fundraising. Last year was a very hard year, was an unprecedented, unprecedented year for fundraising with the election. Then coming into this year with the SNAP and all, and all of that. So we did have to scale back, and we are working with partnering agencies to make sure that no one goes without. But we are also still in need, and I'm gonna do a shameless, that we still need, we still need money, okay? And I just have a simple $5 challenge that I'm asking everyone. If you give $5, ask three people to give $5, and ask those three people to give $5. Because with community, $5 can make a change. We don't need a lot, but $5 can make a change, and we'll be able to scale back up so that way we can continue our legacy amount of feeding 5,000 families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And how can they give those, that $5?
Okay, you can go to our website at upworthfoundation.org. That is E-E-W-O-R-T-H-foundation.org. And you can go ahead and donate. And if you can spread the word, and I'm asking everyone too in the audience. We just, we do need it because food insecurities in our neighborhoods, it's real. And I always tell people, the families we feed are not those that just don't have. It's people like you and I who have jobs, who get up every day and go to work, and they're not able to have sufficient food to be able to feed their families. It's, it's, it's real. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate this year, right now, receiving this as the first ED following Elder King Harris is like remarkable for me, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you all. Councilmember Watson, Lewis, and Parity, would you like to read proclamation 1906 or is it 7?
Six.
Six.
Okay.
Yeah. Proclamation number 251906, World AIDS Day. Whereas, the first World AIDS Day took place on December 1st, 1988, providing a platform to raise awareness about HIV and AIDS and to honor the lives affected by the epidemic. This year marks the 37th commemoration of this important day, and?
Whereas, this year, on World AIDS Day, we will recommit to ending the HIV epidemic in Denver and around the world. We will also rededicate ourselves to fighting the discrimination that too often keeps people living with HIV from getting to the services they need and the full lives they deserve, and?
Whereas, 42 years ago, visionary activists developed the Denver Principles Manifesto, which shaped the active involvement of people living with HIV in the AIDS response. This was a historic first step toward the greater involvement of people with HIV, or GIPA principle, which promotes the meaningful participation of people living with HIV in decision-making, not as passive subjects, but as protagonists, fully involved in the response to AIDS. The Denver Principles outline rights and responsibilities for people living with HIV and provided recommendations to healthcare professionals, family, and friends. This remains the model for an ethical public health response, including for those experiencing homelessness, for people who use drugs, and for those living with mental health issues and disabilities. And it only came into being because of the direct action of advocates and activists, and?
Whereas, the first needle exchange program in the United States was created, often illicitly, by groups such as the National AIDS Brigade and the AIDS Coalition to Unleash Power, also known as ACT UP, as a direct action to reduce the spread of HIV. And needle exchanges have been instrumental tools of harm reduction in Denver and beyond, and?
Whereas, thanks to the dedication of scientists, activists, healthcare workers, caregivers, and so many others, we have made enormous progress preventing, detecting, and treating HIV, reducing transmission and AIDS-related deaths, and supporting millions of people so that they can enjoy long, healthy lives. Still not everyone has equal access to that care. For the more than 10,000 people in the Denver metro area and 39 people, 39 million people globally now living with HIV, especially members of the LGBTQIA+ communities of color, women, and girls, a diagnosis is still life-altering, and?
Whereas, Denver and Colorado are taking bold measures to significantly decrease estimated new transmissions. First, by identifying persons who remain undiagnosed and linking them to care. Second, by supporting those diagnosed with HIV to engage in care and treatment with access to medication to attain viral suppression, recognizing that early initiation of antiretroviral medication allows individuals to take medication as prescribed and to get and keep a non-detectable viral load, which allows them to live long and healthy lives and not transmit HIV. This supports the "undetectable equals untransmittable" message that individuals with a sustained, undetectable viral load cannot transmit HIV. Third, by expanding access to pre-exposure prophylaxis or PrEP for prevention, and?
Whereas, World AIDS Day is an opportunity to remember those we have lost, to celebrate those who are surviving and thriving with HIV, to honor healthcare workers, advocates, and researchers who have dedicated their lives to this disease, and to recognize those who continue to provide support and leadership in the fight to end HIV and of AIDS in our lifetime, and?
Whereas, at a time when our LGBTQIA+ communities, in particular our trans neighbors, are under increasing legal attacks throughout the country, it is imperative that we continue to reduce stigma, strengthen protections, and follow the lead of communities most impacted. The continued fight for the rights and dignity of people living with HIV and AIDS is central to that imperative.
Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Denver City Council. Section 1, that the Denver City Council commemorates 37 years of World AIDS Day on December 1st, 2025. And Section 2, that the clerk and recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation, and that a copy be transmitted to Angels Unaware, Brother Jeff's Cultural Center, CDPHE, Center for Health and Hope, Children's Hospital, CHIP, Colorado Health Network, CORA, Crazy Love Africa, Denver Element, Denver Health, Denver Health PHI, the Denver HIV Planning Council, Fast Track Cities, Gilead, the Harm Reduction Action Center, Hey Denver, It Takes a Village, Planned Parenthood of the Rocky Mountains, Park Hill United Methodist Church, the Positive Women's Network of Colorado, Project Angel Heart, Promotores de Esperanza, the Central Colfax, Servicios de la Raza, UC Health Infectious Disease, VIIV Healthcare and Vivent Health, and we left out DDPHE.
Thank you. Councilmembers, your motion to adopt.
I move that proclamation number 251906 be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded, comments by members of council. Councilmember Watson, Lewis, or Parity, who's gonna start us out?
Council President, we have a large group of folks that we are providing proclamations to, but we'll first start with just?
Wait, hold on, hold on. No, it's your comments. It's your comments, because we haven't even, we haven't even voted. You're five steps ahead. So let me go back to my script. Comments by members of council.
My apologies, Madam President. I jumped ahead.
Oh, good. I'm here to keep you on, on your?
You are doing a great job, because I need it. Wanted to first start by, by saying, when I first came out in 1993 in Omaha, Nebraska, I, one of the first volunteer opportunities, work that I did was at the Franciscan Motherhouse. In 93, there weren't the medications and the treatments. We were still burying lots of our friends, especially those in the African-American community and the Latino community. And in Omaha, the St. Francis Center was a hospice, a place for folks who have went through all of the viral tests. All of the medications are available at that time, and they simply were living there in hospice, awaiting their death. Oftentimes, family members didn't show up. We were the only folks that came and held their hands and spoke to them. That was an impactful moment in my life as a queer man, in my life, quite frankly, as a human. Seeing so many folks discarded, so many lives destroyed, not just because they were infected, but because they were unloved by the families that they so desired to be loved by. The many communities on this list that are part of this proclamation, and the folks at the Franciscan Motherhouse, and the folks at all of the other AIDS projects that have had the opportunity to serve and support, they have continued the work of angels, ensuring that no one lives through this disease without love and without support, that no one goes unnamed. And that's where the Names Project came from, to making sure that the names of folks who died anonymously, some of them, that their names will be forever remembered by this community. I am honored each year to elevate World AIDS Day as a moment of triumph as well, simply of loss. We know too often that the places and spaces and institutions that we rely on lets us down, especially when it comes to discrimination and it comes to communities that are unloved. And it takes those communities to stand strong and to fight on their own. And without the LGBTQIA+ communities through the 80s and the 90s, fighting and pushing forward to ensure that a government listened, more of souls would have been lost. And so to everyone on this list, I want to thank them, and Councilwoman Parity quickly added DDPHE, which we should have listed as well. I want to acknowledge Robert George with DDPHE for the work that they do and the Ryan White Act as part of the grant giving that saves lives and the good work that DDPHE provides to make sure that those funds get to the families that need it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to say, especially in the context of what we are seeing politically, that oftentimes, when things are wrong in our society, the person who speaks up first is often isolated. I mean, it took an individual being unafraid and unapologetic to stand up against injustice when it comes to the AIDS epidemic, to be unafraid to stand alone. And so often, that is so necessary. And so to translate that into 2025, almost into 2026, is there are going to be circumstances in which all of us are really going to have to stand in our courage and have to stand in our brilliance and sometimes stand by ourselves and be the first person to speak up against injustice in the same way that the folks during the AIDS epidemic had to do the same and to be the first and to be alone. And so I really appreciate the opportunity to continue to have this conversation. But let's not forget that the folks who were the first were often isolated and often critiqued and often criticized because of their stances and because of their fierceness and because of their ability to be able to stand alone in isolation. And that translates into a lot of the movements that we see today, whether that's Civil Rights or the Voting Rights Act or whatever that might be when it comes to advocacy and to activists, that it takes activists oftentimes to say the thing that needs to be said when people are too afraid to say it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parity?
Yeah, so I have family members whose names are on the AIDS quilt. My, she would have been my aunt had I ever gotten to meet her by marriage, Alice, and her baby. She was an injection drug user in New Jersey. She died in the early 90s. And to this day, so again, they're on the AIDS quilt. I really value the family that I married into for not, for really rejecting shame, you know, talking about her, talking about how she died, continuing to love her. They're the kind of family where I have to go back to New Jersey like a billion times a year, and there's always a giant party with all the aunts, all the uncles, all the cousins. And Alice and her little girl would, no, I mean, she'd be an adult, she'd go with me, but they would be there, you know? So I just want to say that we have to, we have to really, really push on this rollback of public health and this like restigmatization. on this rollback of public health and this like restigmatization that we're seeing right now, because it's just so dangerous. We all remember in the late 1990s when HIV infections were at their peak and it was really scary. And we have fought back against that, not with any, I mean, there have been miraculous sort of changes to the medication that's available and everything like that. But by far, the biggest piece of how we've done that has just been public health response, you know. And for that to work, you've got to fight the stigma. People cannot be living in shame or the public health response falls apart. Part of the way that we all got through the COVID pandemic was because of lessons learned from the AIDS pandemic. So I think many of us, whether we know it or not, owe a lot to the activists who sort of exploded into public view and said, "We're not going to go die in secret. We're not going to be ashamed." So really grateful to everyone that's carrying that work forward here in Denver. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avita?
Thank you so much, Council President. I can't beat all the wonderful things that my colleagues have said. But just like earlier with the proclamation, I didn't want to say anything, but I have to acknowledge the people that I've lost as well. And I was just a child when I lost my aunt to AIDS and other little kids at school wouldn't play with me anymore. And that was the reality that you all are speaking to. And I'm not going to lose opportunity to say Mary Hope Swatt is my name. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So World AIDS, World AIDS Day is a moment to honor the lives touched, shaped, and lost in the global fight against HIV/AIDS. It's a global fight. I remember listening to Colorado Public Radio hearing that Trump was going to take away funding for a lot of the medication in Africa. And for me, it touched on a very personal story. When I was young, my mother spent four to five months in South Africa working at an orphanage caring for children who had lost their parents to AIDS, hearing her stories, stories of resilience, of heartbreak, of children who faced unimaginable, unimaginable loss. Yet she found ways to find laugh, laughter, and hope. Changed me forever. It opened up my eyes to the humane impact behind the statistics of the HIV epidemic and instilled in me a lifelong commitment to compassion, public service, and advocacy. Today, as we are in solidarity with those who live with HIV, honor those who we have lost, and we commit ourselves to ending the stigma. We also have to think about the caregivers, the families, and the communities who continue to show us what courage looks like. Their strength. My mom has a picture of those kiddos in our house, and I remember their faces. And it's their strength, their lessons my mother passed down to me, guide me, and my belief that we must keep fighting for health, equity, dignity, and the promise and the future free from HIV/AIDS. So thank you for the council sponsors for bringing such an important proclamation this afternoon. Madam Secretary, roll call. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albi Tres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Louis?
Aye.
Parry?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting. Announce the results. 11 ayes. 11 ayes. Proclamation 1906 has been adopted. We have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Councilmembers and the sponsors, who would you like to be inviting up? Who would you like to invite up to accept the proclamation?
And now correctly, Council President Jess Wiedenholt, founder and eddy of Crazy Love Africa, is Jess with us?
Yep, coming to your left.
Oh, there you are.
I would actually like to invite everyone to come forward who is receiving the proclamation to stand beside me. Don't be shy.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you so much for this recognition for all of our organizations tonight. My name is Jess Wiedenholt, and I'm deeply honored. We are deeply honored to accept this proclamation. I asked if I could accept the proclamation this year because I wanted to help recognize these beautiful humans beside me for all their contributions to all of those who are most affected by HIV. So I stand here before you today as an affected individual to express this to you. These individuals do not receive many accolades. They care for people living with an invisible disease, one that is still wrapped in stigma, silence, and fear. And because of that, they show up with an extraordinary amount of respect and grace every day. When someone living with HIV can tell no one about their status, they turn to each of these individuals. During COVID, when we were scared and unsure how this new virus would affect us, we turned to you. During medication changes, lab scares, relationship changes, we turned to you. When we don't know how to tell someone or whether we should tell someone, we turned to you. When we lose someone to HIV, we turned to you. When new research emerges, we turned to you. When we need information about prevention and harm reduction, we turned to you. And you are always there. Some of you have been doing this work for decades, truly since the very beginning. That is commitment, that is belief, and that is love and action. And for that, we honor you today. So on behalf of those affected by HIV in our community, we rise in gratitude and thank you for being here for us, even in the moments when no one would. Thank you.
We have five required public hearings this evening and one courtesy public hearing. As a reminder, councilmembers need to turn their video on during the vote. For those participating in person when called upon, please come to the podium. On the presentation monitor on the wall, you will see time counting down. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, please accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling the council their names and cities of residence, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home addresses. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you are available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes of your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Romero Campbell, will you please put Council Resolution 1600, City Council sitting as ex-officio board members of directors for the Ballpark General Improvement District, approving the work plan, adopting a budget, and making appropriations for the budget year 2026, and approving a mill levy and amending the 2025 budget on the floor for adoption?
Yes, I move that Council Resolution 25-1600 be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Resolution 1600 is open. May we please have the staff report?
Excellent. Good evening, member, good evening, board members. My name is Dan Strjennic, and I work in Department of Finances, Capital Planning and Programming Division. I'm here to give a brief staff report for the Ballpark Denver General Improvement District and request approval of the 2026 work plan and budget, making appropriations for the budget year 2026, approving a mill levy and amending the 2025 budget. So Ballpark Denver GID is located in downtown Denver in the immediate vicinity of Coors Field. The boundaries are generally described as 20th Street to the southwest, Coors Field and the railroad tracks to the northwest, Broadway and parcels adjacent to Broadway to the northeast and the alley between California and Welton to the southeast. In 2024, City Council approved the formation of the Ballpark Denver General Improvement District and the creation of the District Advisory Board and established State Council as the Ex officio Board of Directors of the District. The ordinance specified that the advisory board should, subject to the approval of the Board of Directors, conduct and manage all affairs of the district as the authorized agent of the Board of Directors, including its financial and legal affairs. The District Advisory Board held a public hearing on September 18, 2025, where the 2026 work plan and budget was adopted. And after that hearing, now recommends that you, the Board of Directors, approve the proposed work plan and budget, including the mill levy and amend the 2025 budget. In 2026, the work plan budget include total projected revenues of $1,383,500, which is generated primarily by an assessment of five mills on taxable property within the district. Total projected expenditures are projected to be $1,731,000. We are also amending the 2025 expenditures to $1,585,373. City staff has reviewed, has reviewed the 2026 work plan budget filed by the city clerk under file number 2024-0064-C and recommends Resolution 25-1600 for approval. We do have representatives of the GID available for questions as well. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. First up, we have Stevenson Farnsworth.
Evening, council. My name is Stevenson Farnsworth. I'm a resident of the Ballpark neighborhood and have been there since 2009. First, I want to thank you for your support. Every time we've come before y'all, we were successful at the ballot box last year, passed resoundingly, and we have officially started in 2025. As the volunteer treasurer of the board, I wanted to share my five favorite facts about what our ambassadors have been able to do since they hit the ground on March 1st and continued their work through the end of October. First, in regards to our right-of-way, we have moved over 3,134 bikes and scooters, allowing for mobility for visitors of Ballpark, for residents, and for those that come to us. Second, our biohazard cleanup, as you can imagine, unpleasant. Over 1,283 items from our ambassadors. Graffiti on the public right-of-way, as well as vertical trash. So think about posters, stickers, and that nature. Over 5,314 items have been removed, and over 4,922 trash cans have been emptied. And for the items that haven't made it to the trash cans, they have picked up over 13,320 pounds of trash and rubbish that are all within the public right-of-way. As a reminder, the Ballpark ambassadors work in conjunction with Dottie and our city services, providing services up and above that. I want to thank you all for your support with the city through the help of our Councilman Watson. And so, thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kate McKenna.
Good evening, sweet council. My name is Kate McKenna, and I'm the General Improvement District in Ballpark and the executive director for the General Improvement District. Following Stevenson, I have very little to say. He's done a really fabulous job representing me both as a resident and our organization as a member of our Board of Directors. We are just here in fever, and we would like to say thank you for your support.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from members of council on Council Resolution 1600 approving the Ballpark General Improvement District? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Do you have any comments from members of council on Council Resolution 1600? Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for the leadership and members of the Ballpark GID for being here tonight. I got to tell you, I mean, this is the work that you have done. First and foremost, for folks who aren't aware of Ballpark, a third of the institutions within this general improvement district are service providers. They are nonprofit organizations. This is the most unique general improvement district, and it took this community of folks, and it took an amazing leader like Kate to look at this segmentation of a district, which is set up by tax incremental funding, financing, to fund the improvements within the communities that they're serving. And they looked at that segmentation not as a fault, not as something to be, that they are, that is a difficulty for them, but they looked at it as an opportunity, an opportunity to ensure that they can still serve the businesses and the residents within that community and also partner and make, as part of their partnership, the service providers that have been there for almost 70 years. That is not an easy task. That work is not without its difficulties. But I have been blown away by your leadership as I'm staring at all of the board members that are in the room. I've been blown away, Kate, by your strong dedication, your innovation, and your focus. This GID is necessary. We cannot have a connected city with Ballpark in the middle without services, without support, and without a city leaning in and saying that we want to be a partner. And so I thank you all for your trust and friendship of me, and I commit to you as well to continue to push within the city to make sure the dollars and the taxes that you are self-imposing on yourselves, that we as a city come in and we match your energy and your excitement. So thank you all for your good work. Thank you, members.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Resolution 1600. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albi Tres? Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman? Louis? Upstate. Parry?
Good job.
Aye.
Good job, Louis.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting. Announce the results. 10 ayes. 10 ayes. Council Resolution 1600 has been adopted. Councilmember Parry, will you please put Council Resolution 1601, City Council sitting as ex-officio board member for the Denver 14th Street General Improvement District to approve the 2026 work plan and 2026 budget, including the capital charges, 2026 maintenance charges, and making appropriations for the 2026 fiscal year and amending the 2025 budget on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution 25-1601 be adopted.
Parry?
Hold on. It has been moved. And that has been seconded. The required public hearing for Council Resolution 1601 is open. May we still have the staff report?
Excellent. Good evening, board members. I am here to give the, this is Dan Strjennic again. I'm here to give a staff report for the Denver 14th Street General Improvement District and request approval of the 2026 work plan, 2026 budget, including the 2026 capital and maintenance charges, making appropriations for 2026 fiscal year, and amending the 2025 budget. Denver 14th Street GID is approximately just under 23 acres in size and is located along 14th Street from Market to Colfax and generally includes all parcels along both sides of 14th Street. It was created by council and approved by the electors in response to the 14th Street Initiative to create Downtown Ambassador Street. In 2009, City Council approved the formation of the 14th Street GID and the creation of the District Advisory Board. The district was established to acquire, finance, operate, and maintain street improvements. And the district's creation ordinance calls for the GID to pass a work plan... And the district's creation ordinance calls for the GID to pass a work plan and budget each year. The District Advisory Board held a public hearing on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, where the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget was adopted. And after that hearing, now recommends that you, the Board of Directors, approve the proposed work plan and budget, including maintenance charges and capital charges before you tonight. In summary, the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget includes total projected revenues of six hundred and six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is comprised of just under three hundred thousand in maintenance charges and just over three hundred thousand in capital charges. And projected expenditures are projected to be six hundred and six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Additionally, we are amending the twenty twenty-five budget expenditures to six hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. City staff has reviewed the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget filed with the city clerk under filing number two zero zero nine dash oh six two nine dash A J and recommends Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen oh one for approval. I do, we do have representatives here of the GID to answer questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no individuals signed up to speak this evening. Council Resolution sixteen oh one. Councilmember Louis?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Can you tell me what oversight do we as the Board of Directors have over the work plan once it's approved? And how do we receive updates from the Advisory Board over the course of a year?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Brad Neiman, City Attorney's Office. The City Council sits as the ex officio board, and it has delegated certain responsibilities to day-to-day operations to the District Advisory Board. There can always be efforts to get briefings or get updates from the District Advisory Board throughout the year to make sure that the work plan and budget are being, excuse me, adhered to.
Okay.
Do you have any other question?
Yeah. It does, it does, it does, excuse me, answer my question. The second question I have, actually two-part, is did the advisory body in this work plan make arrangements for private security? And the second part is, are there any plans for the coming year that may involve the incorporation of private security?
I think I can answer that. The Department of Finance, they do not have plans to, they do not have security in their budget this year. They primarily focus on maintenance of, of, of the streetscape and along the right-of-way, and they do not have plans to do so going forward.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Do we have comments by members of Council on Council Resolution sixteen oh one? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, Councilmember Heinz?
Thank you, Madam President. I summon the boards while we abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary will call on Council Resolution sixteen oh one. Councilmembers Sawyer? Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn? Gilmore? Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Abstain.
Cashman? Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Nine ayes. Nine ayes, Council Resolution sixteen oh one has been adopted. Councilmember Parity, will you please put Council Resolution sixteen oh two, City Council sitting as the ex officio Board of Directors of the Gateway Village General Improvement District, approving a work plan, adopting a budget, and making appropriations for the budget year twenty twenty-six and approving a mill levy on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution twenty-five sixteen oh two be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Resolution sixteen oh two is open. May we please have the staff report?
Excellent. Uh, I, this is Dan Strzeganic again, Department of Finance. I'm here to give a staff report on the Gateway Village General Improvement District and request approval of the twenty twenty-six work plan, twenty twenty-six budget, making appropriations for the budget year twenty twenty-six and approving a mill levy. Gateway Village GID is located northwest of the I seventy, of, of I seventy and Chambers Road intersection. It consists of approximately two hundred and forty-three acres in the Montbello neighborhood. It is completely developed and primarily consists of residential property at this time. Responsibilities for the district include maintaining landscaping, maintaining landscaping and parks. In nineteen ninety-four, City Council approved the formation of the Gateway Village GID and the creation of the District Advisory Board. Creation ordinance specified that such Advisory Board should conduct and manage all affairs of the district as the authorized agent of the Board of Directors, including its financial and legal affairs. Pursuant to Resolution number thirty-two, series of nineteen ninety-five, Denver City Council authorized the District Advisory Board to create a work plan and budget for approval by the Board of Directors annually. The District Advisory Board held a public hearing on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, where the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget was adopted. And after that hearing, now recommends to you, the Board of Directors, that you approve the proposed work plan and budget, including the mill levies before you tonight. In twenty twenty-six, the work plan and budget includes a total projected revenues of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is generally, generated primarily by an assessment of ten mills on real property within the district. And projected expenditures are expected to be one million, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. City staff has reviewed the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget filed with the city clerk under filing number two zero zero five dash oh eight six oh dash A D and recommends Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen oh two for approval. Like before, we do have a representative online available for questions if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one individual signed up to speak this evening. It's Sarah Shepherd. No? All right, that concludes.
That is the executive director. She's at another board meeting and is commenting if questions are necessary.
Okay. That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of Council on Council Resolution sixteen oh two? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Same question for this one. Did the advisory body in this work plan make arrangements for the private security? And the second part, are there plans for the coming year that may involve the incorporation of private security?
Yes, so I, I can answer that question, Dan Strzeganic, Department of Finance. They do not have private security in their budget, nor do they have plans to going forward.
Good point, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Do we have comments by members of Council on Resolution sixteen oh two? Seeing none, Madam Secretary will call on Council Resolution sixteen oh two? Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close voting, announce the results.
Eleven ayes. Eleven ayes, Council Resolution sixteen oh two has been adopted. Councilmember Parity, will you please put Council Resolution sixteen oh three, City Council sitting as the ex officio board member, Board of Directors for the Rhino General Improvement District, approving a work plan, adopting a budget, imposing capital charges and maintenance charges, approving a mill levy, and making appropriations for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution twenty-five sixteen oh three be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Resolution sixteen oh three is open. May we please have the staff report?
Of course, Dan Strzeganic, Department of Finance again. I am here to give a staff report for the Rhino General Improvement District and request approval of the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget, imposing the imposition of capital and maintenance charges, making appropriations for twenty twenty-six fiscal year and approving a mill levy. Rhino Denver GID is located northwest of downtown and includes residential and commercially assessed properties around the Brayden Boulevard corridor. Generally, the GID is centered on Brayden Boulevard stretching from I seventy on the north to Twenty-Ninth Street on the south and bounded east by the Union Pacific Railroad Line and to the west by the Burlington Northern Railroad Line. The GID primarily supports infrastructure enhancements and maintenance in the Rhino area. In twenty fifteen, City Council approved the formation of the Rhino Denver GID and the creation of the District Advisory Board and established State Council as the ex officio Board of Directors of the district. The ordinance specified that the Advisory Board should, subject to the approval of the Board of Directors, conduct and manage all affairs of the district as the authorized agent of the Board of Directors. The District Advisory Board held a public hearing on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, where the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget was adopted. And after that hearing, now recommends that you, the Board of Directors, approve the proposed work plan and budget, including the capital charges, maintenance charges, and the mill levies before you tonight. For twenty twenty-six, the work plan and budget includes total projected revenues of one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which is generally primarily by an assessment of four mills on taxable property within the district, as well as approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand from capital charges. The total projected expenditures for twenty twenty-six are two million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. City staff has reviewed the twenty twenty-six budget and work plan filed with the city clerk under filing number twenty fifteen, oh two oh one dash oh. Sorry, I guess I shouldn't say zero two, zero one dash oh, and recommends Resolution twenty-five dash sixteen oh three for approval. We do have a representative of the GID here as well to answer questions if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. First up, we have Adam Markey.
I am just available for questions if needed.
Got it. Next up, we have Rachel Marion. Rachel Marion also available for questions as needed. Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Do we have questions from members of Council on Council Resolution sixteen oh three? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Same question. Did the advisory body in this work plan make arrangements for private security? And are there plans for the community, for the coming year that may involve the incorporation of private security?
So the GID Board did decide to allocate six percent of the budget for the clean team and a potential pilot program for security that would be partnered with the bid. So they would, the bid would be taking the lead on it. The GID would be sort of in support because geographically they do overlap.
Tell me, does partnership with the clean team and the parallels with private security?
Well, currently, the clean team that handles Rhino does not have a safety component to it. They are purely a clean team.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Come, come from Watson?
Yes, Council President. I just have a procedural question because of Councilmember Heinz abstaining from the last vote. And, and this is to Brylin, Council President, if you don't mind me asking. Since we're sitting as the ex officio board, as City Council members, if you are, for most of my bids, GIDs within District Nine, I sit on the board. I often do not vote as a board member, but are we supposed to abstain if we are board members of a general improvement district or business improvement district when it comes to for our council and we're voting on their work product? I thought I knew the answer, but I thought, let me just ask this before the vote comes on these.
Hi, Brylin Drady, Assistant City Attorney. I may ask Brad Neiman to help me a little bit, but if we do need to give specific legal advice on whether you should abstain, we may need to go into an executive session.
In general, not specific.
Let me have Brad digger crack it up first.
Yeah. Thank you for the, thank you for the question and the joke, actually. Appreciate that, Councilman. I would not give you legal advice, but I think it is up to you to decide if you want to abstain or not abstain.
Can I interject? Can I interject? I need to interject. You're not giving him legal advice. What you're doing is you're advising your client. We are your client. So why would you have to abstain? What are the rules of abstention? Can you go over them so then he can understand the risk that he would be taking? Because we need advice from you as our council. If you don't want to do that, I can always phone a friend and call John Griffin, who's online. Would you rather have it come from John?
Well, I, I can give abroad, but I would certainly defer to John and to Brylin as well as Legislative Council.
Is John Griffin online? Is he, he's off? Okay, then we're gonna have to ignore you.
Just generally speaking, Council President, an abstention would be appropriate if there is a conflict of interest that would prevent a council member from making their official decision as a member, as a sitting member of council. Whether that rises to the level of sitting on as a non-voting member on the GID board would be up to the council member to determine whether that is sufficient to make a record of it or not make a record of it.
And usually you have abstentions because a conflict of interest equals what?
Equals a monetary or a financial involvement or, well, those are the primary examples that come to the top of my head.
Yeah, that's according to our vow that we take when we get sworn in with the Board of Ethics, correct?
Correct, and the Board, and the Code of Ethics under the DRMC as well.
Got it. Okay. Councilmember Watson, does that answer your question?
Appreciate your general statement. Very helpful.
Thank you. Do we have comment, okay. Madam Secretary will call on Council Resolution sixteen oh three?
Comments?
Do we have comments?
Yeah.
We have to gavel out. I thought we did. I thought I closed and I closed it, and then I did comments by members, and that's how.
That was a question.
Oh, is that a question?
That was a question.
Okay. Comments of members of Council on Council Resolution sixteen oh three?
Thank you. So I am voting no on this one tonight because of the provisions for private security. And I've spoken on this issue twice already tonight in the context of bids, use of private security. Here we have more oversight than we're looking at at a bid, but in my role as a director, I'm voting no because of my previous experience as an R T D Board of Director with private security that we had there. Thank you. Thank you. Madam?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Councilmember Watson?
And just quickly, just wanted to say thank you to the Rhino General Improvement District. Lots of hard work was done in the separation of the three districts, not three districts, the General Improvement District, Business Improvement District, and the Art District. And clarifying those roles, separating the executive directors and a year and a half of community meetings. And so I just wanted to put it on the record and thank you all for the amazing work and congratulations to the new executive director. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments in the queue. Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Resolution sixteen oh three? Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Albitres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Nay.
Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results.
Ten ayes. Ten ayes, Council Resolution sixteen oh three has been adopted. Councilmember Parity? Will you please put Council Resolution sixteen oh four, City Council sitting as executive, executive, executive official Board of Directors of the Sun Valley Denver General Improvement District, approving a work plan, adopting a budget, approving a mill levy, and making appropriations for the budget year twenty twenty-six on the floor for adoption?
I move that Council Resolution sixteen oh four be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Resolution sixteen oh four is open. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you. This is Dan Strzeganic, Department of Finance. I'm here to give a staff report for the Sun Valley Denver General Improvement District and request approval of the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget, making appropriations for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year and approving a mill levy. The Sun Valley Denver General Improvement District is located southwest of downtown and is centered in the Sun Valley neighborhood. The district is generally bound by Ninth Avenue on the south, Decatur Street on the west, the South Platte River on the east, and the W Light Rail line to the north. Its creation, the district, consists of approximately twelve properties owned by or controlled by the Denver Housing Authority. In twenty twenty-two, City Council approved the formation of the Sun Valley Denver General Improvement District, which established State Council as ex officio Board of Directors of the district and created the District Advisory Board. The GID's primary focus is to provide for the ongoing maintenance and streets, uh, excuse me, the ongoing maintenance of streetscape, plan public improvements, open spaces, green infrastructure, and related improvements in the Sun Valley neighborhood. The District Advisory Board held a public hearing on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, when the twenty twenty-six work plan and budget was adopted. 2026 work plan and budget was adopted, and after that hearing now recommends that you, the Board of Directors, approve the proposed work plan and budget, including the mill levy before you tonight. In 2026, the work plan budget includes total projected revenues of $94,600, which includes an assessment of six mills on taxable property within the district, as well as overall expenditures projected of $94,600. City staff has reviewed the 2026 budget and work plan filed with the city clerk under filing number 2022-0076-F, and recommends Resolution 25-1604 for approval. Like the previous districts, we do have representatives of the GID here to answer questions if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one individual signed up to speak this evening. First up is Erin Clark.
Good evening, council members. I'm just here to answer questions if you have any on behalf of DHA as the property owner within the Sun Valley Denver General Improvement District and on behalf of the JID Advisory Board. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Do we have questions from members of council on Council Resolution 1604? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Same question. Did the advisory body in this work plan make arrangements for private security? And are there plans for the coming year that may involve the incorporation of private security?
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. We do not have plans to operate private security through the General Improvement District. Our district is unique in that it is on land owned by the housing authority. We do provide for third-party security through our housing developments and as part of the overall operations of our properties there. And so, to that degree, some of that work also redounds to the benefit of the sidewalks and other exterior areas that are adjacent to those properties. But we, of course, are also quasi-governmental, so have an element of additional scrutiny that we put onto those vendors and how we select them and how we oversee them. But nothing is planned at present that would go directly through the district. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Resolution 1604? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Resolution 1604. Councilmembers Sawyer?
Aye.
Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President Sandoval?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting, announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. 1604 has been adopted. Councilmember Parity, will you please put Council Bill 1578, approving and accepting the Downtown Denver Area Plan, which plan shall become a part of the Comprehensive Plan 2040 for the city and county of Denver pursuant to the provisions of Section 12 through 61 of the Denver Revised Municipal Code on the floor for final passage?
I move that Council Resolution 251578 be placed upon final passage in pass.
It has been moved and seconded. The courtesy public hearing for Council Bill 1578 is open. May we please have the staff report?
Go ahead. This is how close of a partnership we have. David Gasper's Social Project Supervisor with Community Planning and Development and just happy to be here tonight and introduce Andrew Iltes from the Downtown Denver Partnership. We'll start you off with some slides about our process, and I will cover your criteria and evaluation. You seem inspired like us where Dan Aykroyd and Chevy Chase go into the room at the same time. That's what that felt like. Good evening, well, Madam President and members of council. My name is Andrew Iltes. I am Senior Vice President of Planning and Community Impact at the Downtown Denver Partnership, and it is truly my honor tonight to present the Downtown Area Plan before your consideration and adoption this evening. My honor in this moment is rooted not just in my pride for this work and for this city. I have to share a little bit of a personal anecdote. I remember my dad bringing me to 16th Street Mall when I was a kid, and he used to lift me up on the shuttle buses. There were stainless steel railings, and it felt like I was about to go to the moon. And I loved that experience so much that I, in my late teens, early twenties, moved into affordable housing at the Denver Dry Building where I proceeded to work at a restaurant. I worked at the Palomino Restaurant, which, if you remember, is now exactly where I work today. Same office, same space. I can still smell it and feel the plates in my hands as I walk down the hallway. But my pride really is for this city, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to represent the thousands of community members, the consultant team, and the city and partnership staff who worked together to bring this before you this evening. Through this incredible partnership with the city, which includes staff and leadership from most of the city departments, it includes community advisory committee meetings and focus groups and the public who volunteered thousands of hours sharing stories, framing priorities, and honing actions within this document. Together, we're bringing forward a plan founded in the belief that better is possible. In this moment, we're prompted by the public, who, when we work collectively, have the strength to do better, and that's what this plan is all about. We know that when we work collaboratively, great things can happen. Neighborhoods can grow out of the ground. People can find work, and future generations can have a city to be proud of. Just as strong vision was for Union Station, created by the commitment from our leaders to collaborate on making difficult things possible, this plan frames a vision for downtown and gives us all a way to be accountable to each other in our future. Our charge in creating this plan in this moment is about finding near-term solutions towards a long-term vision. This plan showed us how important it is to have a downtown where a density of jobs and economic activity can provide one-fifth of the taxable land value for the city, one-fifth of the lodging and retail sales tax. There are very few places in our region that are poised to play a role in the economy like downtown is. And this plan showed us how vulnerable downtown can be to seismic shifts in the economy brought on not only by the pandemic, but really more so on our delinquency in transitioning downtown fast enough from a commercial district to a complete neighborhood. We had thousands of conversations with people from the community. We engaged nearly 7,000 people online. We held public open houses. We engaged visitors at large public events. We had focused conversations with folks from the community who are oftentimes overlooked in these processes. And the resounding hope and support for downtown reflected by the community was wide-ranging. And what we heard was that a vision for downtown must not just reflect the values of the people who live and work here, not just the people who have a direct stake in this place, but also anyone who has a fond memory of this place and the people who have yet to experience this place. And in reconciling with the community on downtown's past, we uncovered many new priorities for housing, jobs, equity, and sustainability that you'll find in the plan. But most importantly, we realized that a new hope from the public in the next chapter of downtown is that we focus a lot more on play. And when we talk about play in this plan, we're using the most broad definition inclusive of all ages and abilities and broad enough to spark joy from the kid in a spinny chair on 16th to visitors in the performing arts complex. We already know that when creating opportunities for fun, joy, we amplify the opportunities for people to gather with each other. Focus on play helps us overcome the stigma that downtown is just one thing. And believe it or not, a downtown that focuses on play is actually more economically resilient, too. A dense urban center like downtown Denver, I believe, is the best hope we have for eliminating conscious and unconscious bias in our communities, because when we interact with one another like we do downtown, we are forced to share, to challenge each other, to play together. So, after that, I'll turn it over to David, who's going to walk through more of the technical pieces of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll run through the comments that we received during our plan process and the overall plan content, discuss the criteria for your evaluation, and ultimately, our staff recommendation of adoption. Quick slide here on the schedule. We are at the end of the process. We really launched this in the public around Labor Day 2024, so it's been relatively quick process. And I want to acknowledge all the hard work that not only CPD staff, but so many different city departments. We have representatives here from DODI, DPR, DITO, CASER, DAV that have played integral parts of getting this plan to the finish line in partnership with CPD and the Downtown Denver Partnership. We had an August public review draft, which had over 1,100 comments, but also comments from our community advisory committee. Members are here again today, internal review as well as thorough planning board review of the document. Major things we heard were safety, affordability, job creation, and economic investment, mobility and access, better streets and public spaces, arts and culture, and green and sustainable. I'll run through the plan content relatively quickly, but pause in a few places where we have added important pages to the plan that were fed input from the community. I want to land on this plan snapshot for just a second. I think it's a really valuable kind of visual elevator speech, if you will, that really speaks to a lot of things that Andrew just went through, right? The plan has these near-term action items that set us up to improve and invest in downtown to address the community's interest in safety, affordability, streamlined governance, supporting local business and office users, as well as connections and access. And those are all built on these foundational elements of the building blocks of the plan. That's the investment, resilience, stories, innovation, equity, and connection, and most importantly, play. As Andrew mentioned, play really rose to the top as we were taking input in from the community. A lot of those stories and memories of downtown really helped us galvanize this idea of a focus on play could lead to the spark that we need in downtown to help deliver some of our short-term projects. We have a lot of momentum on Civic Center. Let's make sure we deliver that type of great open space. Same thing with Skyline Park, Denver Pavilions, and they reimagined Glenon Plaza, our short-term opportunities that this plan advances, all in support of big change for tomorrow. There are significant catalytic investments outlined in this plan, like reimagining Broadway, thinking about how we can realign Sphere to open up access to Cherry Creek in a really meaningful way, as well as adding transformational park space. I won't belabor these numbers again. Andrew talked about them, but a huge impact on not only the state with the region with downtown, and it's a critical to address those issues right now. One thing we added in this introduction section about the plan is really leaning into the stories and history and culture of downtown, building upon the success of Denver Union Station and lower downtown, and thinking through how we can recreate those opportunities by celebrating more of our stories today and making sure that downtown is inviting to everyone. The building blocks, as I mentioned, are the kind of foundation of a vibrant, healthy, and complete downtown. And then we also plan very much acknowledges that there are real challenges, acute challenges in downtown that we need to address right now. With challenges, though, there are opportunities, and with the various connection that we see in downtown, we want to be able to better weave mobility into all of downtown's streets and open spaces. Where there's inconsistent investment, we can activate the market and make sure that our private, our public dollars bring about private investment, as well as acknowledging that there's a lack of places to explore and linger, and really opening up downtown Denver to be a premier play destination. I think this is a great spread that we added into the plan that really expresses that downtown is not a complete, right? There's so many opportunities here to take what we have on the ground today and reimagine what it could be. And the plan has these catalytic investments that will change the face of downtown over a 20-year period. Most of the plan recommendations, in fact, all the plan recommendations are in chapters four and five. First one here is seven policy and program bundles that highlights a lot of the kind of big moves for Denver and downtown. This is an example here with navigation eligibility, where we highlight the outcome-based goal on the left side of the spread, and on the right side, more detailed policies and programs. Again, with outcome-based policies as well as those numbered strategies. We also have an appendix that has an implementation matrix as well as an implementation plan that dives much further into each one of these strategies and will be a key part of our implementation efforts. Focus areas, also seven of those, that really focuses where we want to be able to bundle projects together to have the biggest impact on downtown with public and private investment. Civic Center is a great example of that. Many things are moving forward on here. Excited to see some of these come to fruition in the near-term future. And the implementation chapter, probably one of our most detailed plan of action that I've seen in any of our small area plans, where we have immediate, short-term and long-term action items that actually are detailed quite extensively in this document that allows us to move forward very quickly with some impactful action. And the appendix, I mentioned those Denver stories, there are really great write-up on some of those. Appendix A is multiple maps, as well as an implementation plan and matrix. With that, we'll dive quickly into the evaluation criteria. When evaluating plans to be adopted, a supplement to the comprehensive plan, City Council shall consider the following criteria: an inclusive community process, that the plan is consistent with the vision, goals, and strategies of the comprehensive plan, and that the plan demonstrates a long-term view. Andrew highlighted the inclusive process that had thousands of people participating. I think we're really proud of how we touched so many different people in different ways with this process, and we use an actual storefront on 16th Street. I think that was a really fun example of how we got a lot of great feedback. Consistency with the comprehensive plan and blueprint Denver outlined in your staff report, extensive alignment with both of those citywide plans. And then with the long-term view, this is the collective aspiration of the community and the visions of vibrant, healthy, and complete downtown as a compass for guiding growth and investment in downtown for the next 20 years. So, with that, staff's recommendation to adopt the Downtown Area Plan as a supplement to the Comprehensive Plan 2040.
Thank you for the great report. We have 20 individuals signed up to speak this evening. I'm going to read the first five, and then you all can sit up in the front bench, so then you all don't have to move around. So, the first five are Lisa Pope, Ryan Ross, Jesse Paris, Rebecca Hernandez, and Brandy Majors. So, if you're in that first group. First up, Lisa Pope.
Hey, I think I'm muted.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lisa Pope. I'm a resident of Upper Downtown. Recording in progress. I'm thrilled to be here this evening to voice my strong support for the Downtown Area Plan. As you know, downtown is an important juncture, one filled with incredible opportunity. This Downtown Area Plan could not have come at a more critical time for our city's core. What makes this plan particularly special is the community process that created it. Over the past year, I've witnessed hundreds of residents from downtown and from neighborhoods across Denver together to shape the vision. As a member of the Community Advisory Committee, I'm proud to be a part of a robust, thoughtful, and collaborative process. The level of engagement, the quality of dialogue, and the genuine commitment to listening have been remarkable. The result is a solid, actionable, and visionary plan that will usher downtown Denver into a bright future. This isn't just aspirational language on paper. This is a roadmap with concrete strategies and implementable actions. As a downtown resident, I'm pleased by all that the plan envisions, a dynamic, inclusive neighborhood that will bring even more people to experience what those of us who already live here know and love about downtown living. At its heart, this plan is about creating a great neighborhood, a place to call home. From addressing livability concerns to strengthening connections, from diversifying our housing mix to expanding amenities, the Downtown Area Plan thoughtfully addresses what it takes to build a thriving residential community in the heart of our city. It recognizes that downtown must be more than office buildings and entertainment venues. It must be a place where people of all backgrounds and incomes can build their lives. The plan's commitment to creating open spaces, supporting local retail, improving walkability and safety, and fostering genuine community connections shows a deep understanding of what it takes to make a neighborhood work. Denver's future depends on a vibrant downtown, and this plan provides the blueprint to get us there. I urge you to support the Downtown Area Plan. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ryan Ross.
Good evening, Council President Sandoval, Councilman Heinz, council members. I thank you for the opportunity. I thank you for the opportunity to make some remarks at the first public hearing held on the downtown area plan by any entity involved in drafting this plan. My name is Ryan Ross. I am the director of New Downtown Denver, a nonprofit organization that I and others created earlier this year to put forth proposals to revitalize downtown Denver. Unfortunately, the plan that is before you tonight is a result of a deeply flawed planning process. No public hearings were held during the course of the writing of this plan. No comments were solicited online. The most recent meeting held by those writing this plan was a public meeting at which comments were not solicited. The meetings of the Community Advisory Council were not announced ahead of time, and the backgrounds of the Community Advisory Council members were not posted online. My organization has drafted some proposals that would dramatically reshape downtown Denver and give it the vibrancy needed to revitalize it. And earlier this year, I reached out to the Downtown Denver Partnership, which played a key role in the drafting this plan, and I said, hey, I've got some ideas. Can we meet? And I didn't get a response. So I reached out to the board president, and finally I did get a meeting with the staff members at the Downtown Denver Partnership, led by Courtney Garrett, who's here tonight. And Courtney's advice to me was simple. She said, in order for your ideas to be considered, you need to make them part of the process to adopt and draft a downtown area plan. So soon thereafter, I asked Courtney and David for the opportunity to meet with members of the Community Advisory Council. My request was rebuffed. I repeated my request a month or two later. My request was either rebuffed or ignored again. So I stand before you tonight, grateful that I finally get an opportunity to address in a formal setting my proposals for advancing of downtown Denver. And I'll spend as much time as you want describing them for you, but I need to tell you first how they contrast so sharply with what's in the plan. The plan, as you know from having read it, consists of a long series of micro projects that even collectively won't do much to get the vibrancy that we need in downtown to get it back on its feet. And so I asked one of the lead consultants writing the plan, I said, why are there so many small-
Thank you, sir. That's your time. Thank you. Next up, we have Jesse Perez.
Yes, good evening, members of council, those watching at home, those in the council chambers. My name is Jesse Bouchon-Perez, and I'm a representative for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, Chabaco's Black Experience, and Hands to Revolutionary Agenda. And I reside in the fine District Nine, in the historically black district known as Five Points after Legacy Loss. I want to know why this plan wasn't already incorporated into the 2040 plan. If somebody can answer that, I would greatly appreciate it. Will affordability be included in this plan? I seen from the presentation something about affordability, but it didn't really go into detail about what kind of affordability we're talking about. I want to know what AMI levels of affordability we're talking about. I want to know how long it's going to take for this to be implemented. I want to know what's going on with these commercial buildings that are supposed to be being turned into residential buildings, and how long that process is going to take in regards to this plan. I'm glad to see that you did input from the community that is often overlooked, such as my community, the black community. That's good, you did such outreach, but I'm ashamed to know that there was no public hearing on this, like the previous speaker stated. How will this help the Walton Street corridor? I would like my councilmen personally to answer that question, because we still don't have the business that we deserve in the Five Points. You have a BID, and them businesses aren't getting the business that they need. So it's like, why do you have a BID if the businesses aren't being patronized? Are the people from downtown actually going to come into Walton Street and actually patronize those historically black businesses, the so-called people of color businesses? I would like to know that. What's going on with the light rail? Is the light rail going to be incorporated into this plan? What's going on with these one-way streets? We still have a lot of one-way streets downtown. Are these going to be made into two-way streets? Because I'm noticed with all the gentrification that's going on in the side of the town and all over the city, you're changing these one-way streets to two-way streets to try to make it more neighborhood friendly. Is that going to be incorporated into the plan? So if somebody could please answer my questions, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rebecca Hernandez.
And I'm testifying in my capacity as Senior Manager of Government Affairs at the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak in support of the downtown Denver area plan. The chamber supports this plan because it presents a clear, forward-looking vision for a downtown that truly works for everyone. Businesses, employees, residents, and the consumers who power our local economy. A strong, vibrant core is essential to Denver's overall health. We need office spaces, active storefronts that attract patrons, and a workforce that both wants to come downtown and can get to their jobs safely and reliably. A vision for a successful downtown also must be paired with the regulatory environment that makes that vision possible. That means a faster, more predictable permitting and development process, clear, workable regulations, and policies that help employers grow and stay here. Those tools are essential if we want the kind of investment and activation this plan imagines to actually take root. One of the strengths of the downtown Denver area plan is its focus on creating a more complete, livable neighborhood. Expanding housing options, improving public spaces, and adding daily amenities will make downtown a place where people feel connected, supported, and safe, not just during work hours, but throughout the day and week. That matters both for businesses that rely on foot traffic and for consumers who want places they feel comfortable spending time. The plan also acknowledges the real economic shifts we are navigating. Adaptive reuse and mixed-use flexibility will help bring new life to underutilized buildings, support employers trying to attract talent back into the office, and give workers more reasons to come downtown beyond the workday. Mobility is another area where we support the plan's general direction and where we encourage continued attention to balance and practicality. Downtown needs to be accessible for everyone. Workers commuting in, customers visiting businesses, residents getting around, and deliveries that keep shops running. Ensuring safe, well-designed streets, reliable transit, and adequate access, whether that's by bus, bike, foot, or car, is essential to a downtown that functions well. We can improve multimodal options without compromising safety or basic access, and the chamber encourages solutions that do both. Even though downtown represents a small share of Denver's geography, its importance is outsized. A strong downtown expands consumer choices, supports stable jobs across the region, and strengthens the economic foundation that benefits the entire city. For all these reasons, the Denver Metro Chamber of Commerce urges adoption of the downtown Denver area plan, and we encourage continued collaboration on the practical tools, regulatory, mobility, safety, and permitting that will make this vision achievable. A thriving downtown is in everyone's best interest, and we appreciate your leadership in moving this work forward. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to testify tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Brandy Majors. All right, next up, we have, going to queue, David Roberts. We have David, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, my name is David Roberts. I'm the president of the Lower Downtown Neighborhood Association, or LODO, with the RNO that represents just under 10,000 households that live between Lawrence Street and the South Platte River, and also between Spear and 20th Street. I've spent the past year heavily involved as a member of the Community Advisory Council Committee for the downtown area plan, and I want to say today that our board and our community strongly support the downtown area plan, and we urge you to accept it and to adopt it. We strongly agree that downtown should become a complete community with better balance between workspace, living space, and play space. We think LODO is the healthiest, most complete, and functional community in downtown Denver today, so we recognize that our neighbors, Upper Downtown, Ballpark, Arapaho Square, have greater and more urgent needs, and more of the DDA funds that's generated from our Union Station TIF should be invested in these communities. I have a whole speech. The hour's getting late, and I don't think I need to take you through the whole thing, but I do want to tell you that we strongly urge you to accept this plan, support this plan, and let's work together to revitalize downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next four are Rodney Milton, Dorit Fisher, Patrick Walton, and Mark Falcone.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council. I have to admit, I'm suffering slightly from PTSD. I spent a decade as a planner, and so I heard staff report and all kind of the comments on calm. But because I'm here on behalf of the Urban Land Institute of Colorado, my name is Rodney Milton, I'm the Executive Director. ULI is a global organization. We have about 48,000 members. Here in Colorado, we have about 1,400 members. We're a multidisciplinary land use and real estate member organization. And usually I wouldn't spend this much time talking about my organization, but it matters in this case because we're here, because we represent the built environment. And so my members, when asked, about 1,400 of them, what should ULI Colorado's priorities be in the next three years? They mentioned to me downtown revitalization, housing attainability, and the impact of the regulatory environment. And I would argue all three of these are embodied in this planning effort, and makes sense that we are aligned with this planning effort. The opportunity to engage the public, the focus on reimagining a downtown as a thriving place that is not just about where you work, but where you play, is consistent with the best practices that we see at ULI. And so on behalf of ULI, I appreciate the opportunity to presume with you and our partners of the Downtown Denver Partnership and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dorit Fisher.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, council members. I'm Dorit Fisher, Board Chair of the Downtown Denver Partnership, and I'm here to express strong support for the downtown area plan. Downtown Denver, as you know, is at a critical moment. As the heart of our city and region, it needs a clear, forward-looking vision to guide its future. This plan provides exactly that. What I appreciate most is that the plan is supporting business activity and creating a downtown that functions as a true 24/7 neighborhood. It's a plan built for action. The strategies are practical, achievable, and designed so public investment can help leverage private development. It gives us the policy tools we need to make tangible progress. And importantly, this plan reflects broad community input. Over the past year, residents, business owners, workers, community groups, and civic leaders all contributed to shaping the shared vision for downtown's future. The Downtown Denver Partnership is ready to be an active partner in moving this work forward alongside the city and our community. For these reasons, I respectfully urge you to adopt the downtown area plan so we can move forward together and build the vibrant, welcoming, thriving downtown Denver deserves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Patrick Walton.
Good evening, members of city council. Patrick Walton, I'm the Director of Government and Community Affairs with Visit Denver. On behalf of Visit Denver, I want to express our strong support for the downtown area plan and to thank the city and the Downtown Denver Partnership for leading an inclusive and collaborative process. We're especially grateful that Visit Denver and our partners in the tourism and hospitality industry had the opportunity to participate. The plan strongly aligns with Visit Denver's 10-year Denver tourism roadmap and that it aims to create a vibrant, connected, and welcoming downtown that enhances livability for residents and elevates the visitor experience. The downtown area plan also builds on the same priorities we've set for the Denver visitor economy, including improving the downtown experience, enhancing mobility, and fostering a sense of community and place. From reimagining spaces like Civic Center and Skyline Park, to encouraging adaptive reuse and mixed-use developments, the plan will continue to support a downtown where people want to live, gather, and explore. When our city's core feels safe, welcoming, and vibrant, it not only benefits those who call Denver home, it strengthens our reputation as a world-class destination. Denver's visitor economy already supports more than 44,000 jobs in Denver and over 73,000 in the metro area, and the vitality of downtown is key to sustaining that success. We ask that you approve this transformative plan, which ensures downtown remains the heart of our community and reflects the very best of Denver. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Falcone virtually.
Hello, thank you, council members, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Mark Falcone. I have lived and worked in downtown Denver for 25 years. I've also had the privilege in that period of time to work on several transformative projects in downtown Denver. We were one of the master developers of the Union Station neighborhood, and we had the privilege of helping to reconceive how visitors and office workers would commute in and out of Denver through this new fixed rail transit system for which downtown Denver became the hub. Like this plan, there was a plan put in place in the late 90s that began to imagine the hub that the Union Station neighborhood would become. And long before there was a particularly detailed and precise plan, the general framework of that plan was put in place, and that's what allowed the city of Denver, in combination with the state of Colorado and RTD, to buy the land area, which is now the Union Station Transit Center. This plan is similar. It's laying out some broad principles with some very specific concepts, but it will inevitably change and evolve once implementation advances. But it's essential and valuable for those principles to be articulated now in a way that can guide infrastructure investment and private investment that will be essential to maintaining the vitality and growth of downtown. I understand the desire for these grand, bold, transformative gestures, but the truth of the matter is that city building is the simple business of doing the blocking and tackling that it makes to create a healthy, diverse, and high-functioning place that is really scaled around humans. The beauty of the downtown is the extent of its walkability. There are very few places in our 750-mile metro region that would create anywhere near the opportunity for people to interact and mobilize themselves on foot, the way downtown Denver does. But we have work to do. There's parts of downtown Denver that are very inhospitable to people and to the scale of a person not in their car. And that's the good heavy lifting that this plan addresses. And as I think about, you know, what it takes to maintain a long, vital place, I think about where I grew up. I grew up in Rustville. And when my parents were young, when they were my age, they were very robust and dynamic cities, and they literally rotted and collapsed throughout my adulthood. And I think hard about what could have been done differently. And I'll tell you, the one thing they didn't do very well there was they did not pay attention to the human scale of their places. None of them can deal with or address the shifts in geopolitical things that shifted some of that, but they could have created a better place that people might have attached to more substantially at the time.
Thank you so much. The next five speakers are Mike Yankovic, Dick Farley, Andy Christian, Eric Razey. Razey, I always hear your name wrong, sorry, Eric. And then one, two, three, four, five, and then Dane Eckerson. Sorry, got it. Mike?
Yes, good evening. My name is Michael Yankovic. I'm the president and CEO of the Children's Museum at Denver Marisco Campus. And if you've ever been to the Children's Museum, you know that our foundation is play. So we are here to enthusiastically support the downtown area plan. The plan envisions downtown Denver as the nation's largest signature play district, making play and discovery accessible to all ages and backgrounds. By integrating playful design elements, the plan fosters spontaneous joy and memorable experiences in every- experiences in everyday urban life. The plan calls for destination play features and tourism attractions with a focus on Upper Downtown and 16th Street, directly supporting the museum's mission to spark curiosity and creativity. Downtown is reimagined as a place where connection happens, breaking down physical and perceived barriers between neighborhoods, and making it easier for families to access cultural, educational, and recreational amenities. Enhanced public spaces and streetscapes are designed to be welcoming, inclusive, and accessible, supporting community events, festivals, and gatherings that celebrate Denver's diversity. The plan supports diverse housing options, including affordable, family-friendly units, so more families can live, they can play, and grow in downtown Denver. It aims to fill gaps in daily life, amenities, grocery stores, childcare, healthcare, and parks, making downtown a truly complete neighborhood where children's needs are met, close to where they live, close to home. The plan's collaborative approach invites champions from the public, private, and nonprofit sectors to work together, aligning with the museum's commitment to partnership and community engagement. Finally, adopting the Downtown Area Plan is a bold step toward a more playful, connected, and inclusive Denver. The Children's Museum asks City Council to support this vision, ensuring that downtown remains a place where families gather, children learn and play, and community flourishes for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up we have Dick Farley.
Good evening, Madam President, City Council members. My name is Dick Farley, I live at 2500 Walnuts Street in Denver, Colorado. I'm a co-chair of the LODO District, Inc., a business-oriented RNO for Lower Downtown. I was on the Downtown Area Plan's Community Advisory Committee as a voice for Lower Downtown's business and design interests. I support the plan because of its several goals that positively affect Lower Downtown, the first being the reduction of the Spear Boulevard barrier between Arraria and Lower Downtown through Spear's consolidation along with the plan's recognition that linking Arraria with Lower Downtown through careful development would be an economic boon for both Arraria and for downtown. Another important goal is the recognition that 16th Street in Lower Downtown is in dire need of renovation because of its deteriorating condition and its outmoded design. This stretch of 16th Street is the entry to downtown from the Union Station Transit Hub, and should be of equal equality to the newly renovated 16th Street Upper Downtown. Finally, the plan's goal to return Lower Downtown streets to two-way traffic is something that has been a constant request from the LODO District for years. It's a good plan, and its implementation strategies have been an important part of its development, unlike a number of vision plans. LODO District supports this plan, and I urge you to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up we have Andy Cushing.
Good evening, my name is Andy Cushing, I work at the Clifford Stone Museum at 1250 Bannock Street, and I'm one of the many members of the Community Advisory Committee for the Downtown Area Plan here tonight. I urge City Council to vote in favor of adopting this plan, which commits to the difficult, nitty-gritty work of revitalizing much of downtown Denver. And I say "much" because downtown is a combination of many neighborhoods, each with their own problems and successes. In the Golden Triangle right now, there are more people, and more dogs, and a more vibrant streetscape than the neighborhood has ever felt in the seven years I've lived here. And right now, just down Spear Boulevard, right now, one of the greatest basketball players of all time is hard at work proving what greatness looks like. So what's the problem with downtown if these two neighborhoods are on the up? Well, the heart of downtown Denver isn't attracting jobs, it's not bringing butts into office chairs, and it isn't fostering the innovation we need in order to attract the next generation of downtown believers in Denver. You've heard from planners and other intelligent folks about how a downtown that hasn't surpassed its 2019 performance is bad for the tax base and bad for business. So let me talk sports for a second. Nikola Jokic is Denver's big man in the opening lineup for the Denver Nuggets. There are four other men around him, and the reason for Nikola Jokic's greatness, yeah, he's got a great shot from eight feet away, but he's no showy dunker, he's not got some signature three-point shot. He's great because he assists, he passes, he lifts up the team around him. He's going to go down as one of the most consistent enablers of success in the NBA. This could be downtown, with some time, some money, some visions, some talent, we could develop the MVP of the metro area right here, with only 1.8% of the city's land area as well. Because when downtown is playing at its best, the Highlands are doing well, Sun Valley's doing well, Cap Hill is doing well. A downtown that plays like an MVP is well-connected, is playful, is available for daily life. And now, I work at an art museum, I don't think most people expected me to talk sports tonight, but anyone with eyes can see that Nikola Jokic is one of the greatest to ever do it. I was not a sports guy. I had my mind changed by watching one great player change the game. Downtown Denver can become that neighborhood that recruits some of our biggest supporters, some of our biggest fans and believers, if we do it right. I believe this is a plan that does it right, and I urge you to support it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. That was a great, I just had to take a second. I've never had like, sports analogy up here, I've been here a long time too. Eric, you have next.
Hello, I am Eric Lozari, I'm the Executive Director of the Civic Center Conservancy, resident of the Corey Merrill Neighborhood in Denver. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. For over 20 years, I've devoted my career to the Denver Sports Commission and